Ready?
Should be pretty close.
I hereby call to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, January 27th, 2025. Mr. City Manager, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Graff?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Mayor Row.
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney. I had to look to make sure Rachel was there. I hadn't seen her sneak in. At the left end, or yes, the left end of the audience's view of the dais, and our city manager, Pat Trudgeon, at the other end of the view of the dais. And we'll have other staff and other participants introduced as agenda items come forward. We would ask folks, if you have a cellphone, to be sure to silence it, or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting this evening. There are extra copies of meeting materials in the back of the chambers. There's one master copy of all the materials in a three-ring binder that folks have to share, but we also do have extra copies of the agenda for people to use individually as needed. I did talk about cellphones. We'll get to other rules of the road as we get to those parts of the meeting, but with that, I think as introduction, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Trudgeon, from a staff perspective, are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, staff has some changes.
All right. Are there any council requested changes to tonight's agenda, or items council members would like removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Does not appear to be the case. Do we have anyone here in the audience for an item in section 10 of tonight's agenda, the consent agenda, items 10A through J? Normally, we take up those items as a single motion at the end of the meeting because they're rather administrative in nature, but if somebody is here to either provide input or ask a question about one of those items, we do want to give an opportunity to take that item up earlier in the evening, so folks don't have to stay to the end. So we'll just check, is there anyone here for an item in section 10 of tonight's agenda? Does not appear to be the case. With that, it doesn't appear there's any changes to tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder. Discussion on that motion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Our next item on the agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. There will be opportunities for members of the public to comment on agenda items as those items come up during the meeting, but we also do provide at the start of each meeting, an opportunity for members of the public to speak about items that are not on tonight's agenda, but may be of interest to people in the city, or also items that may be related to city business. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item under general public comment at this time? Does not appear to be the case. All right, we'll move on then. Next on our agenda, we have recognitions and donations. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. It would be appropriate for me to read the proclamation and then a council motion to approve. The first proclamation has to do with Black History Month in Roseville, and it reads as follows: Whereas the city of Roseville is committed to recognizing and honoring the contributions of all members of our community, and whereas Negro History Week was established in 1926 by Dr. Carter Godwin Woodson as a way to neutralize the deliberate distortion of black history, and whereas this movement grew over the years to Black History Month to give an objective and scholarly balance in American and world history, and whereas the month of February was selected as Black History Month because it marks the birth of Frederick Douglass, W.E.B. Du Bois, Langston Hughes, and Abraham Lincoln, all leaders whose actions greatly impacted the lives of black Americans in a positive way, and whereas the contributions of African-Americans, excuse me, that African-Americans made and continue to make in building our nation's infrastructure and economic strength, as well as our history, music, arts, national defense from the Revolutionary War to present day, written words and discoveries and inventions are often overlooked, and whereas on January 1st, 1863, the Emancipation Proclamation set the United States on a path of ending slavery, on August 28th, 1963, hundreds of thousands of Americans, 1963, hundreds of thousands of Americans of all backgrounds joined in the march on Washington, which was led by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Southern Christian Leadership Conference, James Framer, Congress of Racial Equality, John Lewis, Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, A. Philip Randolph, and Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Porters, Roy Wilkins, National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, Whitney Young Jr., and National Urban League, in pursuit of jobs, justice, and freedom at the memorial to Abraham Lincoln, the author of the original Emancipation Proclamation, in pursuit of freedom and equality for all, and whereas despite all the progress, the legacy of slavery and segregation still persists in our nation in the forms of mass incarceration, the school-to-prison pipeline, racial profiling, educational inequalities, housing and employment discrimination, racism, and bias, and whereas in 2025, Black History Month honors the theme African-Americans and Labor, that focuses on the varied and profound ways that work and working of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary, have shaped our country, and whereas the city of Roseville invites all members of the community to renew their commitment to inclusion, racial equality, justice, creating a community where all belong, and to participate in activities designed to advance the cause of freedom and equality for all, now therefore be resolved that the city of Roseville hereby declare February 2025 to be Black History Month.
So moved.
Second.
All right, that's moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder. Discussion on that motion, hearing none. All those in favor of approving that proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously. That proclamation is approved. Next, we have a proclamation related to Optimist Day in Roseo, Roseo, Roseville. My goodness, I just had a flashback to my childhood. Roseville. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the Roseville Optimists Club was chartered in January 2017 and has an eight-year track record, and whereas the Roseville Optimists Club's mission is to bring out the best in our youth, community, and ourselves by promoting hope and positive vision, and whereas the Roseville Optimists Club has grown to be a highly successful community organization numbering over 130 members, and provides a number of programs and projects to fulfill its mission, and whereas the Roseville Optimists Club has initiated two important long-term programs, the Character Education and Development Initiative, and the Civic Education and Engagement Program, and whereas the Roseville Optimists Club's vision is to continue to grow in size, service, and stature, and whereas the first Thursday of February is recognized and celebrated as Optimist Day in the Optimist Organization, the Optimist International Organization of over 2,000 local Optimists Clubs, now therefore be resolved, the Roseville, City of Roseville recognizes February 6th, 2025, as Optimist Day in Roseville.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Bauer. Discussion on that motion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes unanimously, and that proclamation is approved. That brings us to the end of our recognitions and donations section, and that brings us right into then our business items for this evening. And our first business item is probably the main event for this evening, or one of a couple of main events for this evening, and that is an update on our future fire department staffing, based on review that department has been undergoing over the last several months, at the request of the council and after discussion on prior occasions about this matter. And I'll turn it over to Chief Rosnahan to introduce the topic back to us and to the public this evening. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just getting things situated here.
Not a problem. There's a lot of paperwork involved in this one.
There was. First off, thank you to the Mayor and Council for allowing us a good allotment of time to be able to come before you and kind of talk about where we're at and kind of what we're proposing with the city council as far as future staffing and where we see things at. Here with my Assistant Chief Neil Schulstrom. I know he did not bring Ashes tonight, but we talked about that before the meeting. We will at a future meeting bring her by for another event or something that we can have her here for. So we've had the discussions starting back in May of 2024, in regards to fire department staffing and our current response model and the call volume demand that we're kind of working with and trying to work within. And first off, I know the council's aware of this, but I do want to make sure that we do know that we have a very good fire department and wonderful firefighters that work for the Roseville Fire Department. And though in some of our data, we talk about difficulty with response times or difficulty making certain calls, that is not a reflection of them. That is simply a demand that we currently have within the fire department and within the fire service in Roseville, that we're just having a hard time controlling that demand and the call volume that we have. So I just want to make sure that that's upfront with the council. So in May, council received a presentation on our difficulty meeting the call volume demand, and advised me to seek out consultants. We came back in August with deliverables and costs for a potential staffing study. Council was not very interested in that, and actually recommended that they would trust my assessment to go back and look at what is appropriate levels of staffing to meet the growing call volume demand that were currently existing, as well as into future demands. So, and that's why we are here tonight. So our goals mainly tonight, as we get into this, is to seek direction from council on how we move forward best into the future with staffing, more so from a budgetary perspective and support, as well as to seek council's approval to apply for a SAFER grant, so a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. It's a FEMA grant that we'll talk about a little bit further into the presentation. So as again, tonight, you know, we're going to review some data and trends, both quantitative and qualitative. We're going to show the needs for an additional staffed response unit, and in our recommendation, we believe this should be our ladder truck. We're going to outline a strategic staffing plan model that we believe fits the organization and the city best, as well as outline the potential costs related to that model and potential timing and implementation recommendations for that as well. We're in a situation, you know, council, as you can see from the graph here, that we need to do something. We're at a point with our call volume that we're having difficulty just today, meeting the call volume demand, let alone what it could be in future years. So, and this group agreed, I think we talked in May that this was a short and long-term issue that we needed to address as a city, and so that's what we're here to do and try to accomplish tonight. Our call volume's growing at an exponential rate, more than 50% in the last six to seven years. That's more than 2,000 emergency calls. Since 2020, we've seen annual increases between four and 13% annually, and last year in 2024 alone was a 9.2% increase over 2023. You know, 9% is more than 600 calls, so more than one to two calls, or one to two calls a day additional. For context, in total, that's around 20 calls per day that our crews that are on duty are handling, just over about 20.4. And so that's one thing that we want to continue to contend with, but also our numbers are looking right on pace for 2025, and I know we're only about a month in, but we're right on pace with an increase in 2025 over where we're at, at this same point in 2024. This growth in call volume is no longer sustainable with existing staffing levels, especially if we continue to see consistent increases year over year, and we'd like to highlight how we'll combat that growth with how we discuss moving forward with our staffing plan.
Perfect. So just a brief highlight of our current staffing model that began its initial phase in 2020 with full implementation in 2021 with the award of our SAFER grant, as the chief mentioned, and we'll talk a little bit about SAFER grants again here further on. We currently staff two medic response vehicles, which are the smaller pickup-style vehicles in the pictures, and then an engine with two to three firefighters, and when staffing permits, our incident commander vehicle is staffed with a battalion chief, although, as noted on the slide, only about 27% of the time are we able to fulfill that need. To provide some context, this model was designed to address our response needs in 2018 and 2019, which were approximately 5,000 annual requests for service. Well, we want to have our battalion chief in a designated response role as much as possible. As I mentioned, our current model is only allowing that to occur about 27% of the time.
And just an item to kind of piggyback on that, our current staffing is right at about 6.4 firefighters per day. Nobody is built as a .4, but, you know, typically we'll have about 60 to 70% of the time at 6, occasionally at 7, and very rarely at 8.
We showed this chart in our spring presentation, which was comparing our daily minimum number of on-duty firefighters and staffed apparatus to our call volume, and then compared that to departments or peers throughout the metro. The slide compares our 23 data to the next slide showing 24 data points, and then the bottom line of the slides show the same data structure utilizing our 2018 staffing and volume, just to give some broader perspective. So as we look at what we saw in 2024, again, that's the same chart, and as you can see in both charts, whether it was 23 or 24, we surpassed our peers by a pretty significant and sizable margin when we look at calls per individual firefighter or calls per individual staffed unit.
And down the light blue column there that you have, council, is the percent increase over 2023, with us at 9.2%. A lot of our other peers are somewhere in that 1% to 3% growth, and so pretty significant growth that we're seeing year over year. Again, 22 into 2023 was about a 4.5% increase for us.
Not all of our responses are single units, so not every call that we go to just takes a single medic response vehicle or a fire engine, or as we call them, a company response. Over 50% of our call types, so we have a matrix of a little over 200 different call types that can be put into the computer system at dispatch when they go through their questioning. A little over 50% of those require a response of more than one unit in order to mitigate the incident that we're going to, and that can be both medical and/or fire-related. So you can see the data between 2023 and 24, that there are a significant number of those calls that require that multi-unit response. And as a result of our increase in volume, in 24, in 2024, there were 235 instances in which we either didn't have the right resources available, so we were sending not the right number of personnel, or we didn't have any resources available at all. Those two categories kind of come together with each other, and that occurred 235 times last year.
This one we shared with the council in May of 2024. This shows the response challenges we have with overlapping, or what I'll call concurrent or simultaneous, calls. About 58% of our total call volume, so over 4,000 of the 6,900 calls we went on, were doubles, triples, or quadruple calls, all happening within the same 10 to 30-minute timeframe. And so as we fast forward into 2024 to show that same trend continuing, 60% of our total call volume is multiple calls happening simultaneously or concurrently. So to give a perfect example, as one call comes in, it might request one, two, or all three of our units. While our crew is en route or on scene of that call, another call, or two or three additional calls, all come in, which is completely stretching our available staffing to its limit. So nearly six times a day, we have these concurrent calls completely depleting our available units and resources. And if you look with the three, four, and five call scenarios, over 1,000 calls, almost 15% of our entire call volume are triples, quadruples, or quintuple calls happening concurrently with each other. So essentially, you know, this situation, and Chief Schulstrom mentioned it, as far as those instances where we have inappropriate response, as well as these overlapping calls, truly are our fire department's kryptonite. They are causing us to have increased response times, causing us to be out of position to respond, and also harder situations that I know we're going to go into in a little bit, where, you know, we sometimes have to cut our patient care short, or we have to cut our customer service with a homeowner or business owner short, because we're trying to race off to get to that next call, so we aren't later, so far delayed, where I don't know if that's always best for what's the patient or the homeowner or the business owner in Roseville.
We talked about this in the spring, and while it's easier to simply look at data when it comes to how many times our firefighters are called to serve the community, there are impacts that are outside of data points, and they are equally important to the assessment that we conducted. Training is impacted dramatically when crews are at their full capacity. We try to conduct the majority of our training while our folks are on duty. So maybe if you've come to one of our live burns, you got to see us when they were off-duty and dedicated to that task, but by and large, most of the training and all of the upkeep of their skillset happens while they're on duty. And so it's really common to see this training interrupted or stopped due to those interruptions. So without adequate training, time, and/or opportunities, our proficiency can suffer, and our ability to continually adapt to the changing needs of our community can become more difficult. As an example, the community identified a need for us several years ago to provide ALS first response, so that took our medical response from the BLS level to the ALS level, but that also comes with the need to have a higher level of a training and additional training. So it takes a significant amount of training time annually to keep and maintain and improve upon those skills. Same is true for our firefighting and rescue skills. They're all perishable skills, and they require frequent reinforcement. Community outreach is a challenge. Without available resources, we're unable to engage our community in the way we would like in non-response settings. So we certainly are here to serve, and that's our goal, but sometimes it's nice to be able to engage the community when we're not on a 911 call in their emergency. And the increased volume has had an impact on our ability to do that, whether it's being able to make it to the community event, or it's interrupting those events. So that certainly has had an impact as well. And as the chief mentioned, our concurrent calls for service or requests for service are a frequent occurrence for us, and as a result, crews are having to make those decisions, whether they're going to expedite clearing, or if they're going to have to not be able to respond to an emergency entirely. And where this plays into a factor is, when we're providing medical care, we can't just leave a patient. So there are some abandonment restrictions that apply. Once we engage our patient contact, we have to stay until we can turn that patient over to somebody at equal or greater level of care. And so that can be challenging for us, because there might be one of those concurrent calls that comes in that would require additional response, maybe more than just the two-person engine company. So that puts a little bit of stress on the system as well. Lack of depth in additional responsibility. So as a result of our staffed units continuing to see an increase in demand, we are frequently either without any available resources or not the appropriate resources. And then lastly, firefighter fatigue. And while this is one of the most difficult concerns to quantify, it is perhaps probably, and probably the most significant. While our firefighters do an incredible job serving the community, and the chief talked about that as we did the introduction here, the high demand placed on them increases fatigue, which can have many impacts. Simply to highlight a few, a potential increase in on-duty injuries, which we have correlated in our data. As shown, we have a much higher firefighter per call ratio than our peers, which places increased physical strain on our firefighters simply by the continued movement and deployment during their 24-hour shifts, impacts on critical decision-making abilities because of mental fatigue, and thus the negative impacts of sleep deprivation on mental and physical wellness.
I can't say we'll continue to grow at an 8% per year, but that is the average of 2017 to 2024. We're averaging an 8% growth year over year, but it's not, there's nothing showing with recent years that it's going to go anywhere else. If we were to continue in an 8% growth between now and 2028, that would put us over 10,000 emergency calls in total. Now, even if we grew at a more modest of 3% to 5%, we would still be well over 9,000 by 2028. Those are simply call numbers that we are not able to, with existing staffing, be able to do. With nearly 25% of our community at or above the age of 65, and a daytime population that more than doubles due to retail, workforce, restaurants, and all those wonderful things that a vibrant city should have, these numbers and the demand are not likely to reduce or stabilize potentially for years. And we want to be able to support the needs of our community and our seniors well into the future. And so with that being said, we wanted to talk with council about what we believe is the appropriate level of staffing moving into the future. Obviously, there'll be, as Chief Schulstrom put out, the some consistency, to a degree on the left side, we would like to add an additional person to a staffed engine. We worked our EV engine into this picture, if anybody noticed.
Small details.
It's the details. But the other piece will be more on the right side. We believe that the ladder truck provides us a versatile vehicle that allows for effective and professional fire and EMS response. By implementing a ladder truck response, we can better effectively manage the current and anticipated EMS call volume, i.e. those doubles, triples, quadruples that happen, as well as provide an accessible firefighting resource, enhancing our long-term fire response capabilities and ensuring the community's safety. As I've mentioned and alluded to, as well as Chief Schulstrom, one of the biggest concerns we have is our lack of fire response and suppression due to the call volume. So often, our engine is being pulled into EMS response due to volume or manpower and resource needs. This leaves us without a suitable fire response apparatus to protect the community. So we believe that this staffing plan, as it is shown here on the slide, will directly alleviate the resource strain, optimize and improve response times, ensure that emergency services can meet the evolving demands of the community, as well as help align daily staffing to national standards. Here is a very similar slide, gives you more of a graphical outline versus a pictorial, but this shows line-by-line the apparatus and the necessary minimum and maximum level of staffing for each. With the addition of a staffed ladder apparatus and personnel increase in the fire engine, it would increase our daily staffing from a minimum of six up to 10, and a maximum staffing of eight up to 13. This increase also helps build in a little bit of breathing room to allow up to three firefighters off of shift at the same time, something we currently don't have. This breathing room actually gives firefighters, as well as fire administration, some area to work in to allow for sick, paid time off, parentally, we have a very young fire department, injury on duty, injury off duty, and those types of things that do happen. And so it allows those things to exist without, hopefully without utilizing a lot of overtime to meet any kind of minimum standards, or minimum, excuse me, staffing standards. This staffing increase would result in the hiring of 15 firefighters. This will allow for both immediate, short-term, and long-term impact and improvement to our response capacity and capability to better serve the community.
In an effort to help visualize what our proposed staffing model would look like, we created two slides. One shows 2023 data, the next slide shows 2024 data. The goal was to lay out the proposed call volume for each of the staffed apparatus, helping to illustrate a more balanced approach to meeting the community's needs, while still having the dedicated resources available for calls to meet our core service delivery. We accomplished this through a review of our entire response matrix, which was no easy feat in the amount of time that we've had to put this together, looking at which type of calls each apparatus would respond to based on the incident's need and the potential staffing available on each apparatus. Overall, this will result in scenarios where fewer apparatus will be responding to an emergency. However, there will still be the same, and in some cases, more firefighters responding, as we have placed a more appropriate allocation of firefighters on the specific apparatus. Just to give you an example, under today's current model, when we are at minimum staffing, if an incident requires six firefighters to respond, we would need to send both medic response units and the fire engine, our entire on-duty staffing complement, to the call. Under the new proposed response model, we would be able to deploy six firefighters to an incident by simply sending our fire engine and ladder apparatus, leaving our remaining two medic response vehicles in service and available for other emergencies or supplemental response. So then the 24 slide, this is the same data that shows the previous slide covering the 2024 data. While it might seem counterintuitive to increase demand on the fire engine, we believe that with the new EV engine being placed into service, it will likely have our lowest cost of daily operation within the entire fleet, and be well-suited for the additional demand without seeing an increase in maintenance costs or downtime. Additionally, while this unit will see an increase in calls, the available ladder apparatus remains staffed and fully capable to respond to all types of emergencies, including fires, when needed.
This graph depicts the same group of comps or peers that we utilized in the previous slides, when we were kind of showing the on-duty, calls per on-duty firefighter, as well as calls per staffed unit. So the orange is a call volume existing or proposed, if it's on the far right, and the blue bar is the amount of staffed units. So as you go along, we've got a Roseville current on the far left, Roseville proposed on the far right, and then our peers. The increase in staffing from going from three to four is pretty substantial. I think it puts us much more in line with a lot of our peers. If we move to the next one, we also talked about calls per on-duty firefighter. This is again, based off of minimum staffing and based off of proposed or potential call volume in 2028 of 10,000, if we're to continue on that route. But we can see we do have marked step down as far as the overall expectations and demand on each firefighter that's on duty. And then looking at our peers, same group of peers, the minimum and maximum number of firefighters on duty falls much more in line and on average with all of our peers that we have here. To note, as far as Ridgefield and Oakdale, the two lower of the communities, we have a significantly higher call volume than both of those communities substantially. So it puts us, I believe, much more in line with the departments that have, you know, are within maybe 10% of each other, and that's the rest of that group that's there.
The need for investment of additional firefighters is not unique to us here in Roseville. It's a broad regional need, and we are not alone in working to address staffing shortages with significant investment. Several departments within the metro area are seeing sizable staffing increases. Just to highlight a few of those that are happening over the course of last year, this year, and the next year to come, the South Metro Fire Department, which covers West St. Paul and South St. Paul, is adding eight firefighters. Bloomington is adding 18 firefighters this year. Maplewood is on a path to add six to 10 over the course of the next two years. Lakeville is adding 15 full-time firefighters this year, and Shakopee has been in the process of hiring at least eight additional full-time firefighters.
One of the big things that we wanted to at least talk to council with is, in regards to this slide, is just to show that what's happening in Roseville is not an anomaly. We are not unique to what's happening around the metro. As Chief Schulstrom mentioned with Bloomington, they're an organization that was predominantly all paid on call for years and years and years. It wasn't until the last four years that they transitioned to full-time, adding 35 full-time firefighters in the last four years, and they're adding another 15 in the next year and a half to add to their, excuse me, 18. Eagan's another example, predominantly paid on call until about 2018, when they hired their first 19 full-time firefighters. Between 2021 and 2024, they've added an additional 20 full-time firefighters to their ranks. So just kind of to demonstrate that this is not just a Roseville-type ask or situation that we're in. As you can see with this org chart, there's not a lot of fluff. There is, with the addition of the potential 15 full-time firefighters, there would be 41 total sworn staff. 39 are shift-working, firetruck-riding firefighters. The only two that aren't are right here. And we also still have to do that, too, but we're just not on shift. But we didn't put in a lot of extra things. We didn't put in an administrative captain or other things. If we're going to do this plan, we want these people to be on the street, helping and assisting in any way possible. And so that's kind of the outline of the org chart, to have clear and established roles. And so that's kind of the outline of the org chart, to have clear and established roles. We've added in, which we'll get into in just a little bit, another layer of supervision. So appropriate supervision, which we'll discuss in just a little bit, that allows for some development and some additional supervisory help around the fire station. We think that we'll have an appropriate balance of firefighter paramedics and firefighter EMTs. One of the things we're not able to do yet is to get a firefighter paramedic on every single staffed unit. And I think that is one of our number-one goals over the first few years, once we get this implemented, is to make sure that we have the highest level of care on every unit within the fire station.
The chief emphasized the importance of consistent supervision as an integral component of our staffing plan. The establishment of the captain's position, as he mentioned, and its inclusion within our proposed daily staffing model will bring about numerous advantages for both the firefighters and the community. The demand for consistent, well-trained leadership has never been more paramount than it is today. From leading multi-generational personnel within the firehouse to commanding some of the most complex emergency scenarios any fire department may be tasked with responding to, the presence of the appropriate number of individuals in a leadership and supervision capacity directly influences the outcomes of the incident. I know that we have highlighted this in the past, but it's important to note the complexity of our community having a large industrial, retail, and housing component all condensed in a small footprint that borders the two largest cities in Minnesota. The addition of the captain's position will facilitate non-operational-related support, as the chief mentioned, administrative projects, since we are just the two of us, assisting with training, development, and actually deploying that training, while simultaneously providing the critical link on the emergency scene, providing a more balanced supervision-to-line firefighter ratio. Additionally, the captain's position will address the need for a capable leader to fill in when a battalion chief is absent from duty. This is currently an area in which we have a critical gap. As is an important key to all of our leadership positions, the captain will help support their firefighters and lieutenants through training and mentorship to continue to prepare future leaders within our department.
In 2024, we had a study that was done through the IFF, so the International Association of Firefighters. So the IFF has a staffing and GIS division within their organization. So what we had here, or what we received and requested from them is it a GIS study that evaluates risks in the community, staffing needs based off of size, city complexities, and census information, as well as compares it with national standards. They do this for different departments across the country. So as we go through here, our current main risk and the item that they highlighted was not able to fully meet the 911 call volume demand. So things that they look at through the census is to look at one, age and concerns with age. Overall, Roseville has a above-average senior population, about 22% at the age of 65. In addition to that, almost 11% of the population will have a disability or is uninsured. What they're trying to evaluate from that is typically, and not in all cases, but typically, that group is typically going to be a situation where there might be some high utilization or high lean on your typical local and core services. And call volume, of course, continues to trend up at a 4% to 10% annual growth. So with some of those risks and some of the risks that we recognize, obviously, Chief Shulstrom just talked about some of the complexities in our city, whether it's high risk, whether it's our fuel facilities, it's 350 different semis that come in and out of this city with gasoline. Obviously, Roseville and the retail centers that we have here. Daytime population more than doubles in our city. If you're here anytime between Thanksgiving and Christmas, it sometimes triples. Proximity to Minneapolis and St. Paul, those are things that we've talked about in the past that, you know, we see more things that we didn't use to see 10 years ago, whether that be assaults, it's overdoses, things of that sort that we have to contend with as a fire department and things that we have to deal with moving forward. We have a growing multifamily and population density. I'm 100% supportive of the city continuing to look at development in ways that we can improve development. I think it's something that's been a good mission of the city council, the planning commission, and our community development department. I just think it's very important that as we continue to look at those options, we have commensurate services that meets that growing density that we add in this community. As well as, we talked about an older population, and I think that we have at least 20 to 30 years before that is fully realized. Our seniors really rely on our emergency medical services and our fire services well, and we're here to provide that. And then, of course, the EMS response and transport, a huge piece that we don't know where it's going to go, but I appreciate the council's support with the legislative priority. And we might be in situations where whether we want to or we need to, I would like us to be nimble and able and ready to take that on if we ever get to that point or the need presents itself.
The GIS study that was completed by the IFF reaffirms the proposed staffing model that we've laid out tonight, while also connecting the staffing recommendations in the NFPA 1710 standard for fire ground operations and OSHA requirements to our proposed model. The study recommended the following key items, as we discussed earlier. Staffing our ladder apparatus with four firefighters, increasing our daily staffing on our fire engine, and committing daily staffing for our on-duty incident commander, which is our battalion chief.
It's a very wordy slide, council, I understand. But, you know, to put it summed up, and as well as in our RCA, the biggest things that we're looking for, this enhancement plan would directly address our existing detriments that we have as a fire department to improve response times, provide a better response plan so that we are not delayed or providing inconsistent care in response, absorb current and predicted fire EMS and EMS call volume demand, a reduction in calls per firefighter, which allows for better rotation, call load dispersment amongst staffed units, which I think is a firefighter retention objective, and having a more prepared and available fire suppression vehicle. And as we get busier with those doubles, triples, quadruple-type calls that we kept talking about and our increasing call volume, the more busy we get, the less available our fire response is for the community.
There are national standards, I mentioned them in our last slide, that provide key staffing recommendations for the fire ground. These recommendations are recognized as the industry standard baseline for response to their respective incident types. We'll just use one example from NFPA 1710 for a typical house fire. The recommendation provides for a guide of 15 to 17 firefighters arriving on scene within eight minutes of the initial dispatch. This includes the necessary fire engines, ladder apparatus, and standalone incident commander. While our proposed staffing model doesn't entirely fill this recommendation, it significantly increases the number of Roseville firefighters available and responding for this type of incident, creating a more predictable and dependable response for our community. While we will continue to utilize our automatic aid partners to supplement our response, the availability of our automatic aid partners is never a guarantee either. In addition to the NFPA standards, OSHA has a two-in, two-out requirement that we are required to adhere to unless there's an imminent rescue. This means that when two firefighters enter a burning building, we must have at least two dedicated firefighters outside who are available to assist should a firefighter need rescue. Under our current staffing model with an engine company size of sometimes just two, we are not able to meet this requirement if our medic companies are tied up on another incident, potentially delaying our fire ground operations. Lastly, as we look at the Insurance Service Office, or ISO rating, it is an entity that helps to rate a fire department's ability to protect their community, which correlates to business insurance rates. We currently are rated as a Class II department, with a Class I being the only level higher than ours. However, recent changes to the ISO rating process now include a comparison to the NFPA 17 standard for response. In effect, the ISO analysis will now compare our department's actual response to specific incident types and whether or not we met the requirement for one engine and one ladder apparatus arriving on scene within eight minutes timeframe. If we're unable to meet that benchmark, we did not receive the maximum available points in that category, which could potentially impact our overall ISO rating. This also then subsequently can impact business insurance rates. There's a newer change to the ISO process designed to reflect ratings that are more aligned with a department's actual performance, as opposed to measuring equipment, training, and water supply as the only key factors.
So with the plan that we've laid out, council, we know that there are levy impacts to this plan. There's a cost to safety and to readiness, and every fire department in America is a levy-based service. And that's why we're a core and essential service. You've heard me say it before, council, but I'll say it again. The number-one job of any government is the protection of those it governs before anything else. And this community is behind, and we're simply trying to catch up and prepare for the future. One item important to note in other departments is a lot of other departments throughout the 80s, 90s, and 2000s have grown. And I'm talking about departments within our city. Our fire department did not, for whatever volunteer mindset or whatever that might be. We did not grow with a lot of our other departments. And now is our time that we're looking to grow. And I know that there is a cost associated with that. But the point being, in the dynamics of the city, our need to grow is very high. And I think in the following slides, we'll lay out some different options and opportunities. Again, none of these implementation or budgetary items are a have-to, but we just at least want to provide council some ideas and some options to work off of and kind of to brainstorm and discuss as we move forward with some cost models for implementation. So give an example of the hiring of 15 firefighters. If we were to do a full hiring starting in 2026 as an example, and there'd be an onboarding, an academy, and implementation the first quarter of 2026, the staffing model that we've discussed with the ladder in bolstering kind of our battalion chief and engine positions, staffing model would likely be up in operational sometime in that April to May 2026 timeframe. And of course, the captain positions in the red are implemented into this plan as well. Cost for this plan is around $1.9 million. The other option, or second of three options that we are throwing out there for more discussion, is mid to late-year hire in 2026. This allows some phasing in, which may be a better option for budgeting purposes. I personally like this option and wanted to bring it to the council's attention because I think it allows some ramp-up time for our budget and corresponding levy increases from the hiring process. This would be a spring/summer hiring process that we'd be working through with a more of a after Labor Day start. This would then give us three to four months of training, installing the response model, and look to officially implement in January of 2027. And the third and final example we at least wanted to provide was something split over two years. More difficult part about this one versus the first two is it's two separate onboarding, two separate, you know, hiring processes and onboarding academy processes that we have to go through, but I think it would still get us to our end goal. The 2026 full hire allows us to be up and running mid-2026. And this model is the slowest of the three as far as up and running with this staffing implementation. It would likely not be until May or April of 2027 when we're fully operational to do that with the staffing that we have here. Of the three, I wanted to at least present to council some budgetary impacts. I think it's important to be as transparent as possible, that there is a cost to this. So I chose the one where we have a mid-hire in September, or mid-year hire in September, the onboarding, and then 2027 have the full implementation. And council, I get this is a big ask, and a big ask of the community as far as financials go. We would not be making this unless we were very, very serious about what we're here doing. Neil and I do not need more reps in front of council. So this is a good opportunity to be in front of you and to talk about this. This isn't for practice. So as we look at this, we wanted to make sure that council understood, you know, some of the things that were impacted by this. So obviously, we don't have numbers for a median home value in 2026 or 2027. So if we were to utilize 2025 numbers with the total costs as we laid out from a September start frame, timeframe, about $658,000, looking at approximately $30.3 million levy, it'd be about a 2.2% levy increase in 2026 to kick this plan off and get it started. The impact on the median home value is about $33 a year for that partial year implementation. Looking at 2027, again, utilizing the same numbers because we can't tell the future as far as what home values might be, that tax levy cost enhancement would be an additional $1.4 million on top with a levy around or approximately $31 million. That ask would be about a 4.5% levy increase related to the staffing enhancement in 2027. The impact on the median home value would be about $70 annually, and that's in addition. So in all, it's about $105 is the tax levy or tax impact on the median home value in Roseville.
As part of developing this plan, we continually sought dialogue with, with our partners in public safety, including the Roseville Police Department, Alina, Regions EMS, who provides our medical direction, and our neighboring departments, who we work collaboratively with to support each other's operational response in times of significant need. While all of our neighboring agencies remain deeply committed to inter-agency assistance, our partners are experiencing similar call growth increases as us, making having an available resource for response to our emergencies more challenging. In addition, and as we have mentioned tonight, we have partnered with the International Association of Firefighters, specifically Local 5051, which represents our Roseville firefighters, to help complete data analysis for this proposal with their GIS study.
I think community feedback and interaction is critical, and that's truly local government at its finest. As we've talked about, and I know some of you are familiar with our Phase 2 plan that we had back in about 2018, 2019, into 2020. With this plan, I'd like to start an engagement plan with the community to be noted and featured in the newsletter. I think there's updates to our website to help get information out. I think we should have handouts that we are giving out at block parties, Fridays with firefighters, other events. Ashes could probably hand out quite a few. I'm sure they would be very, very popular. I want to try to make sure that we're in front of other vested community groups as the Kiwanis, the Rotary, the Optimist Club is going to hear from their fire chief. To be honest with you, to make sure to get information out there and to garner community support, council, I think I can go door-to-door. If I need new shoes in my daily step count, I'll get it. But I think it's that important, and this needs to be done, and more people need to be involved with this. With the SAFER grant, as we transition. The FEMA SAFER grant is an advantageous and generous federal grant that's been around for quite some time. For those that don't know, we received a three-year SAFER grant in late 2019 and utilized it starting in January 2021. It was for $1.9 million. We were able to utilize this non-local match grant for three years. It ended January 31st, 2024. As you can see, the interesting thing about the FEMA grant, or the SAFER grant through FEMA, it varies. It's somewhere between $310 million and $350 million. So about $335 million is what's estimated for this year. It has not opened up yet. I'm actually kind of surprised. I thought it would be maybe last week or sometime this week, so it's very, very close. It's right around the timeframe that it does open up. They typically have between 250 and 350 recipients of the SAFER grant. That's not a typo. It is a 5% success rate. So one out of 20 applicants are accepted or receive a SAFER grant. It is a very challenging grant, but fantastic if you are able to achieve it. And again, like I say, the grant is opening soon, and I think that it's a great opportunity and great avenue for us to pursue. So with our final slide, this is kind of where we're at as far as seeking support from council. First off, we're trying to seek approval from council to apply for staffing grants, specifically the FEMA SAFER grant through the Federal Emergency Management Administration. Second, it's not as much of a request or a vote by any means, but we're looking for some kind of support or some kind of green light of where we go from here. How do we work this into potentially the 2026 budget process? Is this, do we need to reevaluate how we do things? Where are we at from a council perspective so that Chief Shulstrom and myself and the city manager have some direction on what is expected from us moving forward? And with that, I will open it up for questions for Chief Shulstrom or myself.
All right. Thank you to both of you for the information this evening, as well as the wealth of additional information that was in the bench handout. Very appreciative of that as well. This would be an opportunity, then, for members of the council to ask questions of staff, and we'll provide also an opportunity for public comment after that. Are there any questions from the council for staff with all the information we've been presented with this evening?
I'll start.
Councilmember Bauer.
In your prior slide where you noted the staffing and the associated costs, you noted that there was an average between firefighter paramedic and firefighter EMT. What are you expecting for staffing, planning for firefighter EMT to start off transitioning? Or the numbers that you've listed here, are you assuming 50/50 for these hires, say, four and four?
Yeah, we've essentially kind of broke down the average of what it'd be if we hired 15 in their mix of EMTs and paramedics. My anticipation is that it'll be predominantly EMTs upon our original hire of implementation.
And during, over what course of time would you imagine them progressing? Or do you imagine them progressing to become paramedics? And if so, is that training then that we would fund?
Yes, so we offer a paramedic training program incentive within the fire department, where we help them go to paramedic school. We typically do this not for new hires. We will do it for people that are out of probation, have been on the department between one and one-plus years. We've just recently had one complete the process, and we've got another two that are very interested in going through a process very soon. So it's through training dollars we're able to fund it, and it's something that's been very advantageous for us.
Other questions? Councilmember Strong.
Yes, I was curious to know, what is the current use of the ladder truck? And how is it that it is available now for this purpose?
It is a reserve apparatus, so it is for people that are coming from home. We are able to use it in certain situations. We have some mutual aid agreements with our partners in the area to provide the ladder for certain call types, whether it's an apartment fire or something, or just upon their request. So it does roll by our shift occasionally for, you know, response into other cities. Otherwise, it is a reserve vehicle.
You mentioned the 24-hour shifts. Is that the only staffing model that is seen in the fire department model? Or, you know, you mentioned sleep. If you're on a 24-hour shift, it's hard to sleep. Is it better off? Is it better off to consider a 12-hour shift or something? I don't know.
Yeah, the 24-hour staffing model is by and large the most popular. I would say there are, it would be easier to count the number of departments in the country that have full-time staffing that don't use that model. Certainly, there are some conversations, and I think there's quite a bit of dialogue moving towards, we operate under what's called a three battalion model, so A, B, and C shift. There's three 24-hour shifts. They work almost 3,000 hours a year as part of their annual work rotation. The movement that's starting to happen in the fire service right now is transitioning to a fourth battalion. So you reduce that from almost 3,000 down to closer to 2080. So it's a similar work cycle. So it's an additional entire battalion that you have to staff. But that 24-hour model has been, for as long as the fire service has had its career staffing model, the modern-day model, has been the predominant model that is used. There are different variations of its rotation. Some departments work 48 hours in a row, but by and large, the 24-hour model is the most common and prevalent.
And to be honest, if we were to transition to 12-hour shifts, for example, we would actually need to hire more firefighters significantly.
Yeah. I know. I just want, are we seeing that there are staff available for hiring? You know, we've talked about the shortage of people available to hire. So if we're talking about bringing on 15 new people, that's a that's a huge recruitment push.
It is. Short answer, yes, we think we can get there, you know, but it won't be an easy process. Myself and Neil handle the the hiring and the recruitment and things for firefighters. But I think 15 is attainable. We'll have to do some searching. I also think that there's unique situations where we're going to be hiring people that are maybe not fully trained in firefighter and EMT or firefighter and paramedic, where we might have to be providing some of that training once they get in the door. That's part of that first four months of onboarding training that we have to do is is doing that. I think we'll find some that have all the training and certifications that we need, but there will be a few that we likely will, you know, have to hire them based off of good character views and then, of course, bring them onboard and get the appropriate training.
No, I think just to go along with that, we just recently conducted one of our fire cadet hiring processes, which is sort of a pathways program for us. And I'm super happy to say we had 155 applications for that. My previous process that we went through, we had about 40. So the interest is there. I think from the perspective of people who have never been in the fire service before, that's where the chief's comment about having to think differently about how we do that onboarding and how we bring them into the fire department would is definitely something that we'll walk through. But I think there is sort of a resurgence in that interest in the fire service. And so I think that's encouraging to be able to simply say, while it will be different than we have done in the past, we will be able to achieve what we need to to bring these folks in in-house and get them ready.
Just because we did it in the past doesn't mean we have to repeat it. We can be creative.
For sure. I have two other questions. One, obviously, all things that go up must come down. And do you foresee any decrease in usage 20 years, 30 years down the road, or can't even postulate?
Man, 20 years from now, that might not be my problem. No.
Or mine.
That's a good question. And I, the answer is, I don't know. I could, it would only be off, you know, historical data, but I mean, if you look at any community, no one is is going on less fire and EMS emergencies. No one. Even the agencies that we use still had 1% to 2% increases. The city of St. Paul is is blowing up at 5% to 12% a year, just like we are. So incredibly busy. And I don't, I don't know what what it needs to happen to reverse that. I would just be happier with with even a few years of being stabilized with maybe just, you know, no, you know, big, you know, no big reductions or or growth, but just being able to kind of maintain where we're at. So I don't have a good pulse on where that's at. I think a lot of it is community dependent, just depending on the different factors that that exist in your community.
I think there's a another aspect of it, too, is the the frequency may change, but how we're used or how we're asked to be used will certainly change at the same time, too, so that it might pivot from just simply being the 911 emergency to being something that's more proactive. But I don't think the utilization of the staff will probably ever decrease, if you will.
Well, my last question is kind of the $10,000 question in relation to that housing study that we received from STANTEC. And as they projected, you know, the need or the desire to have this big chunk of housing, I would assume that's only going to strain further. Do you have any, any, you know, initial thoughts on their suggestions to add additional housing? And what does that mean for impact on the fire department?
Well, I'm not in a position to make an opinion on what STANTEC came up with. However, as I said a little bit earlier in our presentation, I 100% support continued development and opportunities for housing in the city of Roseville. We have the space for it. I think it's more so the city has to look for ways to have commensurate services to support those types of things. I'm 100% think it's a great idea, and I'm also a citizen and taxpayer in Roseville, and I'm 100% supportive of it. I think it's a great idea. It's more so, do we have the capacity within police, fire, public works, et cetera, to be able to to take that on? And if we do, or if we can create more of that, I am supportive of it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. First of all, how many cities do we do mutual aid or agreements with?
Okay, so we have automatic aid with with all of our neighbors. So that would be Maplewood, Little Canada, the Lake Johanna Fire Department, which is Arden Hills, North Oaks, and Shoreview, as well as St. Anthony. We do have some mutual aid built in, as well as the Ramsey County Closest Unit Dispatching Program with the St. Paul Fire Department as well.
That just adds a whole other level.
Nope. Those are the automatic aid departments. When you think about big picture mutual aid, we have underlying agreements with every, effectively every fire department in Minnesota, but metro-wide, we have partnerships for those types of scenarios, too.
And then, when you have multiple incidents happen, how do you determine who is in charge of each of those? Is it, I mean, do you have the order of who moves up to the, you know, captain or command level?
Yeah, we leave it pretty much to be, you know, to the battalion chief or the lieutenant that's on duty to try to make the call, depending on where everyone is at with with the certain calls that they're on and making the right decision on location and what would be the right fit for for the call response.
Because sometimes that person is also attending calls. So that's why I was curious on that that might make it a little more complicated for them to do that.
Yeah, and I think that's one of our our big push for a battalion chief that's more dedicated in kind of what I'd call a chase car or a command car versus tied to a large apparatus, is it gives them a lot of flexibility to be able to, one, respond themselves, but also to kind of, you know, kind of be a conductor of a of a symphony. You have all the best, you know, symphony people in the world, but if you make them play, they may not be quite as well if they don't have a conductor in front of them.
Exactly. And then my last question is, you know, there was a reference to our housing study, but we already knew this, that our aging population is a big percentage. And I know we have a lot of senior housing that has gone into Roseville. And I, it appears that, looking at some of your data, that we have a higher percentage of utilization amongst that that group of our residents. Is that true?
I would agree with that, yeah.
So the more we age, it seems like that might make our increase in calls go up even higher.
Agreed. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Roth.
I don't have a lot of questions because a lot of things have been covered, but thanks for the report. And I think as a council, we made the right decision having them do this because you had all the data. You compiled it in an excellent way, and it was very readable, and I've gone through it a couple of times, and I I found it very helpful. The one question I did want to know is, under the comparable fire departments we were looking at.
Sure.
Are any, do any of them utilize volunteers anymore or that other model that used to be in place?
Let me refresh myself, but I do not believe so. Oops. No.
No, okay.
None of them utilize volunteer or paid-on-call staff, except for, I would say, I think Eagan Fire is in the same position that we are, in that they're they're allowing a paid-on-call or part-time to, through attrition, to leave the organization. But all the rest of these organizations are a completely career organization.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Bauer.
You noted that, I'm curious to know additional costs, adding these number of additional firefighters. One, you know, do we have space and facility for them? And also, increase in what you would, what you would estimate, if you can estimate, the increase in training cost? What you have listed here is, believe it to salary and benefits, but other additional costs that you see or? And also, I guess, third question, if we do get a SAFER grant, would that be able to be applied to those additional costs, too?
Operational costs, yes, for a SAFER grant, or we potentially could. CIP costs would not be. And so predominantly for CIP, the biggest one that I would know would be turnout gear would be associated with it. We've talked about, you know, utilizing our ladder apparatus, so that's already existing rolling stock, so there should not be a CIP issue there. But it would be turnout gear, and then, you know, uniform costs and some of those things have a have a cost, but I would say we're talking maybe $10,000 to $20,000, you know, worth of, you know, upfront uniform costs, maybe it might be a little more costly, but ongoing, you know, five years from now, uniform costs would not be substantial to add to that. And then, training costs would probably have to go up. Right now, our training budget is about $25,000. I believe that probably have to go to about $40,000 to $50,000. There's about $20,000 related to training as well.
Thank you.
All right. A couple of questions that I had. One is just in terms of, you know, making the ladder a more staffed vehicle, I was trying to remember where that was in its current life cycle and what's the scheduled replacement timeframe? And does this impact that at all? Or is this just a way to essentially exercise a vehicle more than it currently is being used?
It's arrived in 2021.
2020. It's five years old right now. Projected life cycle is 20 years. Given where this would implementation would happen, I don't see it having an impact on its current projected span of life, if you will, potentially in the future. But by the time we hit 15 years from now, I think the ladder truck that we'll be replacing it with will be a far different look than what's out there right now, so.
In my understanding, from my conversation conversation with the chief earlier about this, was that one of the benefits of using the ladder truck is it has a little more storage capacity to handle different types of incidents, whether it's vehicle accidents and extractions or those types of things, that certainly if a medical vehicle is attending to an incident, it doesn't have any of those things typically, or not very many, versus having a lot of those flexible capabilities. So I understood that that was the reason maybe not to look at using the the current primary engine, which will cycle into the backup role as the second, as the second staffed apparatus. I think I understand that right?
Yes, so then, so our our current backup apparatus can still be a backup apparatus for for both vehicles, essentially. They're they're laid out very similar, almost the same equipment on on both. And so there's, I think it works very well as a as a quick up if we need to to move it into the rotation.
In addition to the equipment storage, the other component with the using the ladder, as I mentioned with the ISO rating, they specifically are looking for types of apparatus classifications. And so when you when you do the data review with them, they're going to say, all right, well, what's your ladder truck? And if you go out and show them a fire engine by definition, you won't get the same credit for those points. So there is a part of it that's associated with the actual piece of equipment because of its capabilities that has an impact as well.
Sure. Right. And then I think one of the things, this is more maybe commentary than than a question, but, you know, the notion of the impacts of fatigue in terms of the the calls per staffed firefighter and things like that, I think one of the factors, too, is that certainly with any emergency response job, there's absolutely a certain amount of trauma that is associated with that. And if you're never sort of decompressing and you're always just, you know, in the trauma mode, that's not a healthy way for human beings to exist. And so I think that's an argument for trying to get that calls per staffed position down and to a much more reasonable level than than certainly we're seeing now and could be projected to see in the future. So once again, that's a little bit more commentary, but I I'm imagining if I made it a question, you'd say yes. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Strong.
There's more of a comment, and you're probably already aware of this, but as we approach 2026 and not know what that paid family medical leave looks like, too, that may also impact your staffing as more people are taking more time that is paid. A parental leave is currently available as an unpaid option with the state of Minnesota, but maybe as that is a paid option that's, given the demographic, a younger, healthy male or female, or however they identify, would be more likely to need those, that time away. So I just think that also needs to figure in as you think of how you already suffer at times to not have enough warm bodies to fill the vehicles in the way that you need to. And I think we, nobody really knows, but that definitely something that has to be on the table as an option or something that could impact your staff.
Mr. Fresch.
Just on that comment, for Strong, yes, that's a good point. As a reminder, we have offered a family leave to our staff for six weeks. So I think we already see some of that impact in all of our departments, considering the fire department and the police department, which are responsible. So that's going to increase even more as that is fully instituted, but that does have an impact if it runs throughout for a while. And that's a great thing that they're able to spend time with their child, but it does impact our operations. So that gets us challenging with minimum staffing. So that's another driver of that, that we're just going more and more in that direction. So that's going to continue to be a factor.
Well, and it could go up to 20 weeks per year, depending on various categories. So you go from six to 20. That is a huge impact on your organization. So again, we don't know what the bottom line is, but it's definitely worth making sure that's on your radar of things that need to be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one other question on the the handouts that we had today. So the by far, apparently, the number one type of incident of the top 20 is what's known as sick person, which is like 1,250 fairly consistently over the last couple of years, or just under, just over. Can you talk about what falls into that category, just to understand it?
It's, I know, it's it's hard because that one ends up being kind of a catch-all, you know, for situations. It's it's not that we have, you know, 1,200 purely sick and feverish people, but it is kind of a, you know, the dispatcher has to work with whatever they have when they receive the information from an ILO caller that says, I feel this, this isn't working right. And all of a sudden, they kind of put it in there if it doesn't really fit all of the other things.
So it could be otherwise categorized as general medical, but doesn't mean any of the others.
Potentially, yes. I mean, they they get called for, you know, a sick person, it could be somebody that's having a heart attack, but they don't realize they're having a heart attack, but they're saying that I don't feel right and I'm really sweaty. The dispatcher has to ask a couple of questions, and then they have to dispatch it and get it out. And so it kind of gets lumped into sick person.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Bauer.
Going on the point, the mayor made, most of our calls here look like they're EMS-related. One of our legislative priorities is changes to the primary ambulance service. Would changes to that, assuming that the legislature is able to change that, do you, what opportunities would we have for recovering some of the costs related to EMS?
Pretty substantial. I think that there's a lot to still figure out. I know that there's a big push for changing reimbursement rates for for Medicaid and Medicare. So I think that's an option or opportunity. I think that we have a pretty stable insured rate in the city of Roseville. Typically, a BLS or an ALS transport is is a range from that you can bill for anywhere between $500 and $2,500. Collection rates for a lot of communities, whether you're St. Paul, Maplewood, collect somewhere in the 25% to 40% rate. And so I think that we would be at that rate or better in Roseville because I think of, because of our senior population, I think that there's an opportunity to collect on some of the Medicare transports and rates that we have there. Now, that's not substantial. I mean, the reimbursement might be about $500 to $600, but I think that would more than cover the usage of the ambulance and two firefighters that have to make the transport.
And just to be clear, because of that, we're not able to request reimbursement right now?
No, there's, there's always been talk at the state level for first responder billing, but that has never really made it to the to the floor before. But so, no, there's not anything that we can reimburse for right now as far as EMS.
Thank you.
And just a follow-up, sort of in that category, I think we had a member of the the public had sent us an email suggesting that all we have to do is is have ALINA do a better job of responding to emergency medical calls. And I think actually, we've got some discussions going on outside of this discussion in relation to that. But but I think the the record seems to indicate that, you know, unless ALINA can change their model, they they wouldn't necessarily be able to increase their capacity the way we'd like to see it in this situation.
Yeah, and that would be a substantial lift for our PSA provider to to enhance their level of service currently to to the city, which I don't, I don't think is going to happen. Another comment within that that email is, you know, and I think Chief Scholzheimer Another comment within that that email is, you know, and I think Chief Shulsham alluded to it earlier, is even if our paramedic is on scene, we, they're, they are the transport provider, but our paramedic can actually keep patient care all the way down to the hospital. That's what's given to them through our medical direction and through law. So it's not necessarily, you know, oh, this, this group is now here, they are now in charge. If we want to establish patient care and maintain patient care down at the hospital, we do have that right to do that.
Right. And just one point of clarification before we open it up for public comment. We've mentioned it a couple of times this evening. BLS is basic life support.
Yes.
And ALS is advanced life support.
Correct.
Are we still the only agency in Minnesota that does ALS?
We are not, Mayor Rowe, because we provided a, we provided a blueprint to two other agencies, or at least two other agencies. Bloomington Fire is working on that process and is pretty much there, as well as Brooklyn Park.
Working on it as well.
Is working on it. They aren't officially there yet. But we at least track the mold and and others are carbon copying kind of what we did for the most part.
And just as I recall, as part of that conversation at the time we made that transition, was that that provides a better level of medical response for people in our community, especially our older population, you know, and the issues that can be faced with some of the emergency medical situations that they encounter.
Absolutely. I think people get into a scenario where they believe that a PSA provider for an ambulance means that they are the drivers of healthcare in that, in that particular community. And I've never felt that that is correct. I think that we as a group dictate the level of care in our community and that we should be the drivers of that.
All right. Thank you. With that, unless there are other council questions, I did want to provide an opportunity for public comment before we go to council conversation on this. So we'll just do a check. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this issue this evening that the council is taking under consideration? Anyone from the public to speak on this issue this evening? All right. Doesn't appear to be the case. Thank you to our chiefs for stepping aside for a moment for that. Counsel, we've got a couple of asks here. One is specific to the pursuit of the safer grant application process to help with potentially with funding of the transition to the additional firefighters under this plan and staffing model, and then also the support from the council for pursuing the staffing model more broadly as the budget discussions begin for 2026 and forward. Thoughts from the council? Councilmember Graff.
I would definitely support allowing the fire department to seek the safer grant. I think that it, we have received it once before. I know it's a long shot. I understand that. But I, I think Chief Brosnan was involved in that other grant writing and has some knowledge of it. So I would, I would encourage them to do that.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Schroeder?
Yeah, I would agree with that. You know, why wouldn't we apply for the safer grant? I mean, there doesn't seem to be a downside to applying. So why wouldn't we do that? And obviously, we have shortage in the service that we need for our city. And I think it comes down to figuring out how to do this. It's not an if, it's a how, I think is what it's coming down to.
Thank you.
Other thoughts? Councilmembers? Any objection to pursuing the safer grant? Doesn't seem to be any objection. So that part of the guidance is there. I've heard a little bit of support from a couple of councilmembers, I think, about the general concept of pursuing this. Do we have any other insight from council or objections to that?
I would agree with councilmember Schroeder about the need for this as presented. It's something that I feel that we need to do in figuring out how we do it. This question, I think, looking at this as part of our overall budget and looking at other areas in the budget where we may be able to move some funds or to work more towards some of the core services. But this is a core service and a core part of our community.
Other thoughts?
I also support this. I think agreeing with councilmember Schroeder, you know, it's not a matter of if it really does need to be done, maybe when is the only question. And we can only kick the can down the road so far till we see that we get too far behind. And, you know, already we've, it's coming crashing in. And in a time when getting and keeping good employees is hard, and you add this added stress, I think we really just need to make sure we look at, I think we definitely have to consider how we can incorporate this into the budget. And any grant funding is always helpful. But this is a huge change, but we did save money by having you do the study for us.
Eighty thousand dollars.
I know. There's half the staff for you.
You brought that point up in August.
Right away.
So, no, I do support the exploration of what we can do. And I just don't think it sounds feasible for us to not consider.
Councilmember Graff.
I would agree with all those comments. I've said this before. And when you talk to residents, you door knock, the things they want are the services we're talking about. They expect their taxes to be, go to be paid for good fire service, good police, and, you know, a safe community. So I just think it's how we do this. And I'm glad you started early in the year so that we can factor this into the budget and do it in a thoughtful way. Thank you.
And I'll concur with that. I think the, the other thing that we have out there, although I'm sure by the time we get to that point, we will have spent those funds ten different ways, six ways to Sunday, I think is the expression. But a few years from now, we do have our bonds for the fire station and park improvements from 2010, 11 timeframe that will be coming off and be paid off. And so that's some levy capacity that we can potentially kind of work into the equation here. And we just have to figure out kind of how to get to that point and make sure that we haven't spent it all on ten other things. But, but that's, that's the discipline we're going to have to show. But it's sort of, you know, one of those things that we can kind of hold out there as a, as a potential to be able to make this work better for the community and for the budget. Because I think the last thing we want to do is, is start, you know, reducing other services that the community also expects in order to do this. So we just, as has been said by almost everybody, we have to find the way and the timing and how it all works. And I appreciate that you looked at a number of different models and timing and approaches. And I think the approach that you're recommending seems to make, make the most sense. And so I think that's what we should certainly try to take a look at as the plan going forward, subject to all of the budget discussions and constraints and everything else that we have to deal with and the success or lack of success with the safer grant. I will just say that I think just hearing the case this evening, you may just want to like do a condensed version of this video, you know, minus all what we've been saying.
No.
So it sounds like we've got the council direction on both of the questions that you came before us with this evening. And certainly, as you noted in the presentation, a big part of this going forward will be continuing conversation with the community as well. So I look forward to all that as we go forward.
Sounds good.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. We actually are slightly ahead of schedule. So let's take advantage of that. That brings us to our second business item this evening, which is consideration of a request by Clear Channel Outdoor for some code amendments to chapter ten of our, title ten of our code related to sign regulations. This is an item that's been before the council before and was tabled for some additional consideration of some changes to the proposed ordinance. And without stealing any more thunder from our senior planner, Thomas Pashki, I'll turn it over to him, city planner, senior city planner extraordinaire, Thomas Pashki.
You can steal my thunder, man. You don't have to present as much. But, yes, as you indicated, this item went to council on November 25th, where there was questions and concerns raised by council. And council directed staff to go out and do some additional research. Those minutes are attachment two, if you want to look at a little more specifics. But I believe the lion's share of those concerns are related to negative impacts on residential property. And so staff did go out and assemble several municipalities' signed ordinances related to digital billboards. And that is attachment three. And from that information, came up with five additional, if I could get the overhead?
Please?
Anyway, we came up with five additional code amendments that we would propose as it relates to the initial proposal. And then on January 8th, we felt that the proposal and some of the concerns were of a nature that required additional planning commission consideration. Not extremely different from the original, but enough that we felt we would like to bounce it off them and get them to provide us with some additional comments. And so we brought it before the planning commission on January 8th. They too had questions more related to brightness and a couple of other things, which staff tried to answer as it related to the difference from a static sign, which is what we have right now, and the five existing billboards, to more of the digital display. And then there were also some question related to height, which as a part of the process of the recommendation, staff did propose an amendment to that from the original proposal in order to clarify how height would be determined. And so there was a individual, a resident, that did provide comment, concern, and I believe opposition as it relates to the conversion and adding more light to the city of Roseville or the inner city itself as it relates to these billboards. And then the planning commission recommended on a three to two vote to approve the amendments that you have as the attached draft ordinance. And then with that, I conclude my presentation and open it up for any specific questions you may have. The applicant is here, so he'll be able to answer other questions that I may not be able to.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pashki. Questions from the council on this item as it comes back before us? And I should clarify just before the questions, and maybe for the benefit of the public, what we're talking about here specifically is that currently in the city's zoning code, the city does not allow any new billboards to be put in in the city of Roseville of any type. We do have, I believe it's a handful, I'll say maybe five.
It's five existing.
Existing billboards that are what's known as existing, pre-existing non-conforming uses. In other words, they were in place before the zoning code was adopted that prohibited future billboards. And so they are allowed to continue under state law with certain limitations. And so what this effort is, is an attempt specifically to address the ability to convert those, only those five, or potentially not all of those five, to a dynamic display. In other words, you know, lit like you may see elsewhere, as opposed to the static sort of pasted poster billboard with light shined onto it. And so that's what this whole conversation is about. Just to be clear with the public, we're not talking about adding new billboards to the city of Roseville. And I think that's a wise thing not to be adding. So I don't think that's part of our consideration this evening. But certainly, this is a question as to whether we allow the conversion of these specific existing billboards under certain circumstances to this dynamic display. So that's just by way of clarification. Once again, questions from the council?
I would have a question.
Councilmember Graff.
On that subject specifically, what would be the intention if we don't go along with this, then would those five become obsolete and eventually just disappear? So we?
They would probably more than likely remain as they are.
And as they are.
With the medium that's on them being, you know, switched out periodically throughout the year and them having, you know, light shining on them as they do today.
Councilmember Bauer.
With the new requirements, are all five billboards still viable to be converted into digital displays? Or do some fall off?
I do not believe so. I believe the one that's on Brown Wilbur would not meet these standards. I believe the others do.
Thank you.
Keep in mind, most of these billboards are along our interstate corridors. So it's not like they're in residential neighborhoods, other than the Brown Wilbur one that lies fairly close to residential along 36 and Hamlet Avenue.
Councilmember Strong.
This might be more for you, Mayor. Do you know at the time that they chose not to have new billboard or new or additional bulletin boards, what was the intention of the limitation? Was it that they would eventually cease to exist or just no further clutter? Or what was the intention behind the choice?
Believe it or not, I wasn't around at the time that original ordinance was put in place. But.
I thought you've been here forever.
It only seems that way. But I think, and maybe Mr. Pashki could confirm, just from a general point of view, it would seem that the folks that were decision makers at that time wanted to not allow any new billboards. But I'm sure they probably didn't necessarily conceive of new types of billboards necessarily. And so I would imagine that their expectation was that they, you know, would continue to be there. I, you know, under the existing or pre-existing non-conforming use statutes at the state level, I'm not sure when it comes to a billboard exactly what, you know, qualifies as being under the threshold of being able to continue and over the threshold of not being able to continue. But my expectation was that the people at that time really probably anticipated that they would be there, you know, until that business model went away, I guess. That's all I could speculate as to.
Thank you. Sorry to.
No, that's all right.
I would somewhat agree with that statement that I think there was an intent at whatever time the code changed to prohibit billboards was that the city felt that they had enough of them. And when I started here, I think there were over seven of them, might have been, you know, closer to eleven. Some of those sites have developed, so those billboards have gone away. But I, you know, I think back then, they weren't like thinking forward that there would be such a technology as LED screens for being able to display advertisement and things. And so it was just a way to more regulate the number that they currently had.
And I would say probably, you know, I don't know when that ordinance change was made or when that ordinance went into effect in terms of prohibiting new billboards. But I know in history, there have been efforts to sort of beautify our roadways by eliminating billboards. And that may have been part of one of those movements at one of those times. So it seems to be not a bad idea, generally speaking. Other council questions for staff or for me? Councilmember Graff?
I noticed that there was a thirty-five foot height limit, but that it was from the base of the sign. And I did look at one of the existing signs, and there is a little hill that was built up. So would they be able to do that on one of these signs, build a hill and bring it up higher if they want?
No, it'd be from the existing location, I would believe. So I don't believe any of them are taller than thirty-five feet. And don't quote me on that. I haven't gone out and measured them. But from the information we have, the sign at least that is looking to be converted would meet that, as well as a few of the others, for sure. Obviously, the one that's on top of the Brown Wilbur building is an anomaly as it relates to a billboard because it's on a building.
And that would not meet these standards.
Correct.
Councilmember Bauer.
The current zoning code still allows for improvements of current signs, such as if they wanted to change the incandescent to LED lights or some other very other improvements. The current zoning doesn't require that the sign just maintain, stay the way it is.
As it relates to the sign code, I believe that they could swap out the lights that shine on the billboards to be LED. And for the most part, I think some of them already have. If you drive by them, they're not just incandescent because you can't get those anymore. So it's different types of lights that they use in order to project on their signs to be able to, you know, for people to be able to see their advertising.
But in general?
So that wouldn't change.
In general, they're able to make improvements to their signs, be it the base of the sign or other?
Well, very little. I don't know that, in my time here, I don't know that we find out when they're swapping out light bulbs and those types of things. But if they have to make certain improvements to them, typically, they would ask us if something's wrong with a base and they have to stabilize it and things, that's going to require a certain permit. So we would know that information. But I can't recall any of that happening. I don't think it would preclude that because it's structural.
But once permits pulled, they would be able to make those improvements?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other council questions?
I had a question, question slash comment. I was curious, I asked the communications staff for the city about who would vet out information if we decided to go with this. Because seeing the main advantage to the city seemed to be that we would have opportunity for these PSAs. Has there been any discussion about who would determine what items and how they would be programmed? And if they would be programmed in a way that would be actually useful to the city? I guess the biggest thing was, somebody gets to decide then what's acceptable and what's not. And so I don't know if that's been addressed.
Councilmember Strong, I'm Mayor Rowe. Yes, that would be run out of the administration department from our community relations team. And we've talked a little bit about that. It'd be an opportunity for us to promote events and we would have the ability to dictate what we put on there. And these are for city functions. I understand there's some assistance that they could, the company could do in-house to help us with some graphics if we felt we needed some of that help. They're a pretty capable team, so I think we'd be able to do a lot. But it would be run out of administration and we'd be making those decisions, supplying the information that we needed after coordinating with all the other departments in the city. But there'd be probably some very general things about how to contact the city for Roseville's events.
Thank you.
And if I'm not mistaken, that would come before the city council for approval anyway. Am I correct?
I don't think it'd probably be practical for every, every.
I don't think it'd probably be practical for every...
Why, Matt, the agreement, not every message.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
But there would be some information in that agreement as to what the content...
Yes, the agreement would come from the city council.
Unless everything goes...
Not every message.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, other questions? Oh, Councilmember Graff?
One of the questions I've heard from residents is the concern about environmental impact and how this might affect light pollution in the area. I understand it's along corridors where there is a lot of light, but just quickly over the weekend, trying to read through the research I could find, there were studies that have been done that show that environmental impact from light affects wetlands, especially nocturnal, animals, things of that sort, even immigration, even bird migration. So I'm wondering if this was run by the environmental manager in the city, or if we had any input from the public pewet, or anything like that, or if we had...
Has not.
Okay.
Councilmember Bauer.
Sorry, I found my answer.
If there aren't any other questions from the council, then we do want to provide an opportunity for public comment, and just to sort of, because we haven't had public comment yet this evening, to provide the rules of the road, which many folks may be familiar with, but we do have a three-minute time limit per speaker, and that is, I try to enforce that both generously and gently, but you can say a lot in three minutes, and certainly if you're not able to cover all of your materials in three minutes, if you do have a supplement that you can hand to the city manager, that can get to the council for filling in any missing details at the end of that timeframe. We ask that with all who come up to comment, you just address comments or questions to the council, and state your name and street or address for the record to begin your comments. If questions are asked, we won't sort of do it as a Q and A back and forth during the comment period, but we'll make a note of the questions and then follow up with answers as best we can, once the comments are complete. And I believe, anything else? Oh, one bite of the apple for each agenda item for public comment, so hopefully you can get all the thoughts out in one visit to the mic. And the only other thing I'll say is that if there are multiple people who wish to speak, we do have the two microphones, and people can sort of queue up and wait in the other mic to be ready to speak. With that, I'll turn over, we've got our first commenter ready. Welcome.
I'm Elena Howie. I live at 991 Parker Avenue, and I wanted to just speak to the opposition to these electronic messaging boards.
Could we have the laptop displayed?
I don't, I'm not the electronic techie person here.
We've got the control room, needs to just switch something over, I believe. And we won't, we won't charge the technical difficulties.
It's always the stressiest thing, is whether the tech's going to work.
Nope, loose cable.
Loose cable.
Oh, that's more promising.
All right. Thank you. The Roseville community has already decided that it does not want more billboards. Converting the existing billboards to light emitting electronic billboards is not what the vast majority of residents want or need. The benefit to the city in gaining a bit of advertising, I don't believe, is significant, and I have a number of concerns that led me to come tonight. They include decreased safety on our roadways, excessive light at night, and the lack of flexibility in the ordinance, as it is now worded. My friends and I have personally, I don't know, let's see if we can advance anything. Here we go. Felt distracted by these types of billboards, which raises my safety concerns. And I did some research, and in a recent review of studies related to distraction in billboards, there were 27 international studies occurring between 2008 and 2019. They were reviewed, and the majority of these studies indicated greater distractions with the use of electronic billboards, sometimes even greater than when texting. Quote, "The more recent research continues to show that the drivers most susceptible to unsafe levels of distraction from roadside billboards are the young and the elderly, who have more difficulty with rapidly shifting attention, poor night vision, and glare susceptibility and lower mental processing time. These concerns are heightened today with our elderly driver population growing quickly, traffic increasingly dense, and larger, brighter digital and visual video roadside advertising signs competing for their drivers' attention. As a long-term resident of Roseville, I've always appreciated the easy access to parks and natural spaces. However, we are, we are already subjected to more light at night than is necessary or healthy. There is emerging evidence on how excessive, and in particular blue, light has negative impacts on people, animals, and plants. Migration and mating can be disrupted while other species are more vulnerable or prevented from their normal activity. These electronic billboards would be operated all night as things are proposed now, and they emit a large amount of excessive and blue light. We also don't know the cumulative impacts of adding multiple lit signs, especially in this fairly concentrated area. Roseville would benefit from working on its progression of smart lighting. We would maintain the safety we need while not wasting it on lighting the skies. I'd love to see more stars, and the city could save money. Finally, I don't believe the proposed ordinance offers an adequate amount of flexibility for the city. Roseville shouldn't be stuck with an ordinance that doesn't accommodate the need for updating as research, technology, and priorities evolve." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment on this proposal this evening? Other members of the public who wish to speak? All right. It doesn't appear to be the case, so we'll close the opportunity for public comment. This is a representative of Clear Channel, presuming, making himself available for questions.
Exactly.
And if you do have specific information in response to our previous questions, this would be an opportunity to provide that information at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Again, Matthew Wildon, Clear Channel Outdoor. I'm just here to answer any questions. I appreciate the opportunity to be back in front of you again, and I appreciate your consideration of an ordinance that would allow us to invest in and upgrade our signs. We do have a limited amount of locations in the city. We're really only specifically talking about one billboard in a highway corridor. Again, these are well-lit highway corridors with a lot of other ambient light. Our digital upgrades to the signs, they really do operate similar to the sign that you see there now. The sign is already well-lit. They actually have uplighting that shines up at the, up at the signs. That actually contributes more to uplighting. Digital billboards themselves, the light is directed down. They're all individual diodes, so they can focus them down towards the highways where we want the light and the image to be known. There's louvers in the signs that drag the light down, so there's actually less light going up on these boards. As you get to the sides of the boards, up and down below them, you'll actually see them go dark as you go by them. It's just a different way that light is produced. It's external instead of bouncing off the light. So that's kind of the difference. It's, but they operate differently, but we operate them the same when you look them at night. You talked, I think, last time I spoke to you about, there's ambient light sensors. So at night, those signs go way down. You know, they don't need a lot of light to be seen, and obviously during the daytime, they're going up. But if you do look at them, and I did provide some pictures, I couldn't get great pictures. It's hard when you're in a moving car, but I took quarters where we have a lot of locations where you'll see our digital signs and our static printed signs in the same quarter as you go by. And as you look at them, they look similar, they operate similar, similarly. That's what the ordinance is set up to do. So I appreciate your consideration of our request, invest in your community, and certainly available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions from the council for the applicant? Councilmember Graff?
So if we didn't make this change to the ordinance, are these still viable signs for your business model?
Yes, very much, they're still viable.
So you would maintain them?
Yeah, they would retain, you kind of discussed it earlier, these are non-conforming uses, but we are allowed to maintain them.
Right.
Replace them, fix them, and certainly they're the great locations, great corridors. We'd love the opportunity to invest and upgrade.
And one more question. Is there, do you have any models that are longer than eight seconds? Because eight seconds seems to be a short amount of time to me for that.
No, that's excellent question, council member, and as we've discussed before. I mean, that eight seconds really is based on safety studies done by the federal highway administration, and that's how we operate. We do that in 22 communities in the Twin Cities, now in thousands of communities across the country, but certainly safety is a top priority for us. We know we couldn't operate these signs if we couldn't do so safely, if they were causing incidents, if they're causing accidents. And we, in this, Twin Cities alone, we've been doing that since 2006. We now have 83, just our company, there's other companies. Our company is 83 of these digital signs that we operate, including around, you know, Roseville. We're in Van Nuys Heights, we're in St. Paul, we're in Minneapolis, we're in Shoreview, we're in Brighton, so certainly that is something...
Are there any longer periods than eight seconds?
There are. We do 12 seconds in City of St. Paul.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Councilmember Bauer?
With this conversion, would the amount of light be more or less compared to the, at nighttime for these signs, since they are dimmable?
It's, again, it's kind of hard to answer that, but they actually, in a lot of cases, will actually have less light at nighttime.
At nighttime, yeah.
Than the existing sign, correct? It just really depends on conditions.
Thank you.
But yeah, they're presented to operate less.
Councilmember Strong?
So really, we would still have the five billboards regardless of what happens tonight? So what you're looking for is to update it with current technology, is basically what you're trying to do, correct?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. Exactly correct, and one of the benefits to us and the community is, we're not adding new billboards, but it's like adding new billboards. It gives us opportunities to add, provide more advertising opportunities for local businesses without adding more billboards.
Thank you.
All right. There are no other questions for the applicant? We appreciate you being here, and you can stand by...
Thank you.
If other questions do come up. We've got the request before us, once again, to consider the ordinance changes that are in the attachment. Let's see here, just lost my place. Proposed ordinance is attachment six, correct? This essentially adds in some of the standards that were discussed and requested as part of the November discussion, and further clarifies some other matters. I did want to note, just on the point of comma placement in item D, line, lines 90 and 91 of the proposed ordinance. It looks like the one in the pack, it doesn't have any changes, but I did have some conversation with staff, and I believe the item D perhaps should read, I'll wait for folks to get to that point. So right now, well, I don't say how it reads right now, I'll just say what, I propose the change would be, presuming the council chooses to adopt this, item D would read, "The dynamic display must be oriented towards, comma, and located within 100 feet of..."
150.
I'm sorry, 150 feet, thank you, "of the right-of-way of, comma, Interstate 35W, etc." So the comma that's located after the word "within" would be moved to after, or to just before Interstate 35W. The idea is, as I've heard clarified from staff, is that, obviously, the intent is to have the display oriented towards the road, and then also that the display has to be within 150 feet of the right-of-way. With the way the commas are now, it's a little, little not as clear. By moving that one comma from after, within, to before Interstate, that would clarify that. So if we choose to adopt this, that would be my suggestion. Counsel? Councilmember Strong?
Mayor, on that, when you're saying within 150 feet of the right-of-way, how does that impact the proposed sign across from Walmart on County Road C? Is that within 150 feet of the interstate?
I believe the interstate right-of-way extends, and I'll have to depend on somebody who knows this better, but I believe it extends out towards Cleveland Avenue, and I'm not exactly sure where that line is, but I'm imagining that across that intersection is within 150 feet.
Correct.
Mr. Pashke?
I believe all the signs are within the 150 feet, so they would all meet that requirement.
Okay. That one just doesn't seem like it's oriented to, the other ones make sense as being oriented to that interstate, but that one in particular, it doesn't seem to be oriented to that.
No, I believe it angles towards the north, if I'm not mistaken, on 35W, one of the directions.
And would it be fair to say...
Or you're talking, you're talking about the one that's County Road C?
C in Cleveland, Crossburg.
C in Cleveland. Yeah, that one lies directly adjacent to the right-of-way for 35, and does look towards that collector and 35, but the interstate is raised.
Right, but I believe the process is that each one that's converted has to be permitted by the city?
Correct.
It has to be evaluated by these criteria?
Correct.
And so if it happened that during the evaluation, the city made a determination that it didn't meet one of the criteria?
Correct.
We would not have to necessarily permit that particular conversion?
That is correct.
Right, and which would be an appealable decision to the council if the applicant disagreed with that interpretation? I don't know if that helps.
It does, but I was checking out the face of the city attorney, and I wonder if she had a contrasting view on that matter.
I think the city attorney may make that sort of face, whatever the mayor speaks, because there's just a certain amount of risk.
It's just my face.
Uh, Councilmember Bauer?
I do have a question for the attorney, however. On 8A, we note, which is really noted in the code, that the city will have 20 hours of service. I believe this is one of the only areas, if not the only area, where we're requesting something from an applicant. Can you articulate why this is in there versus left out as a separate contract?
Councilmember Bauer, good question. The largest reason it's there is it was the applicant's idea. They offered this as something to maybe incentivize the city to be more in favor of the conversion. It does exist in other cities in the metropolitan area. I know for sure Minnetoka, and I'm sure your applicant knows if there are any others and what they are. But yeah, it's a very unique situation, and it was their idea.
I believe it, yes, I believe it is in those other cities. I don't believe in their, it's in their city code, however. If the contract is done outside of the city code, or it's not noted, but in ours, we do have it.
Yep, Councilmember Bauer, that's right. It was my idea that it go into the code. If it's a promise that's being made, and it's going to be part of the basis for them to be able to have this use in the city, I thought it should be codified, so that in the future, it's clear that this is a condition of the approval.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strong?
I just wondered if we had also taken into consideration acquisition, merger, sale of the entity, if that alters the contract in some way, or nullifies the legitimacy of the contract, if Clear Channel as it is, or whatever they're called now, sorry, they've finally made Clear Channel, if they were to change who owns them, or where they're based out of, or how, anything like that.
Councilmember Strong, you've made my point for me. This would say that whoever comes into ownership of this billboard, whoever that is, still has to honor the terms of the ordinance itself.
As opposed to a separate agreement?
Correct. The city would enter into a separate agreement, but the terms of it are laid out in the ordinance.
Thank you.
And generally speaking, with land use permissions and non-permissions, it isn't so much tied to ownership as use, as I understand it, so that's why we don't have, like, the contract as part of this, but the specific term that we want to include is part of the ordinance, as I understand it. Other questions from the council, or potentially a motion as relates to this proposed ordinance? Other questions from the council, or potentially a motion as relates to this proposed ordinance? Councilmember Schroder?
Yes, and again, you know, this doesn't stop the signs from happening, because I know, you know, listening to people and reading their emails, and they don't like the signs at all, and this is, with the way things are set up now, we have agreed to let the five continue, and so this would just bring it into, I think, better ways of utilizing energy, and actually probably would reduce some of the light shining up. I would move to adopt the ordinance provided as Attachment 6.
Second?
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Schroder, second by Councilmember Bauer. I'm presuming that includes the infamous comma move?
Yes, yes.
All right.
I would like to suggest an amendment.
Councilmember Strong, your motion to amend?
Motion to amend, to consider a 12-second lapse rather than eight. It is not unprecedented, and it might control some of the safety concerns.
Is there a second to that motion?
I would second that motion.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Groff, to amend the original ordinance motion to change the duration or frequency to 12 seconds instead of eight. Discussion on that motion to amend, as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Strong?
I just think if it is, our adjacent city is already, has found a way to put that into an agreement with the same company, that that would maybe address some of the concerns, especially with our aging population and driving in some of these busier intersections.
Right, as the secondary, Councilmember Groff?
Yes, it isn't that we have hard data here as far as traffic and accidents and so on, but that's pretty hard to do on these roads that we have excessive traffic, in my opinion, on. And I do know the ones that I do see are distracting for me. I know they're distracting to other people, they're distracting to the residents that I've talked to, and I think just, I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but that shouldn't be a lot for the sign company to absorb either, and I think the 12 seconds is reasonable. It's a reasonable ask.
Right, other discussion on the motion? This gives me an opportunity to hit a point that I was going to hit in the general discussion. However, I don't know for sure how I'm going to vote on this motion, but, so, eight seconds at 65 miles an hour is something like just over an eighth of a mile, and I can say, in my own personal experience, I do drive past three of the billboards that are in Van Nuys Heights twice a day, and the eight-second, I believe those are eight-second duration, and I have not found that personally to be distracting. I understand that different individuals can have different senses of what's distracting to them, but, you know, it almost just blends into the background, and I think, in my experience with those particular signs, I oftentimes, in my time driving past them and paying any attention to them, maybe see one message, and maybe see a second one at times, depending on when the change occurs as I'm passing by. So, that's my experience, and I'm just putting it out there as part of the discussion. As I said, different people may have different experiences, and I certainly don't want to suggest that everybody has to have the same point of view as me in that regard, but just having been a pretty frequent consumer of digital billboards over my, over the time they've been in Van Nuys Heights, that's been my experience, for what it may be worth. Any other discussion on the motion to amend with the 12 seconds? All right?
I guess I just would like to add, it's not up to our city council members to make sure that we can make maximum profit for a very profitable organization. I just think it can get very slow in that area by that C intersection, so traffic can slow down, so the chances of you actually having it be useful, advertising time are probably not even there unless you have it at 12 seconds. That turn around the corner, I often am on the 36th end of that, waiting for everyone to merge, and it can really slow down, so at 65 miles an hour, I don't know, I just think that, that the value to it, especially the sign that's down on County Road C, that's at an intersection where people are stopped, I think you're going to find a better use of that time, and I guess, I don't want to, I feel like we're already kind of solving a problem that didn't need to be solved, and so I feel like the 12 seconds is a reasonable compromise between some of the concerns for safety and adapting to the requests that's been made of us.
Right, additional discussion, oh, Councilmember Bauer?
Well, I agree with, what was just stated, that it is not the job of the council to enrich companies, it's also the job of the council not to put through blocks to their profit and to their business. We don't do that for other things as well. And I would agree with the mayor that, as someone that frequents that, and frequents that stretch of road at night, actually, taking children to practice, I will say that I agree that, I have not seen that flip that much.
Councilmember Groff?
In my experience, it's been different, and I'm going down 35W to downtown, and it is distracting, and it does change fast enough that you're not able to get the message. But the other thing is that this is something brought forth by a company, no, we of course support businesses, but we're not only here to support businesses, we're here to respond to the residents. The residents I have talked to and all the emails I have gotten have concerns, they have concerns about environmental issues, they have concerns about traffic, they have concerns about accidents. If we're only going to listen to the business here, that's fine, that's the prerogative of the council, but I do think, we've talked a lot about having input from residents, we had that in our strategic planning, and this is one step where we could actually do that. We could at least refer this to the Pewet Commission, which deals with environmental transportation, and get the input from those residents, that would be another thought.
Is there other discussion on the motion to amend to 12 seconds? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. That motion passes three to two, with Councilmember Bauer and Mayor Rowan opposition. That brings us then to the original motion as amended, with now the 12-second duration. Discussion on that motion, as the maker, Councilmember Schroder?
Nope, I think enough has been said.
Right, as the secondary, Councilmember Bauer?
No.
All right, other discussion on the original motion? I did want to just add a couple of comments. There's been mention of the applicant suggesting the language about the city getting advertising, and I want to make it perfectly clear that that has no impact on my support or lack of support for this. I'm looking at it strictly from the land use and regulation point of view. I guess it's a nice benefit, but if the rest of the content of the ordinance didn't make sense, that was not going to persuade me. And I believe that, that it's nice that the city gets that, I think the city would definitely choose what's going to be up there. What I've seen in Van Nuys Heights, once again, is often they advertise their commons facility for rental, which is a city facility that people can use for events and things like that, that's probably the most common thing I've seen, but it's that type of thing that the cities seem to take advantage of, and that's all I had in that regard. If there's no other discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes four to one with Councilmember Groff in opposition, and I do need to check here, do we have an ordinance summary as part of this?
We do not.
We do not, all right, so we'll be publishing the entire ordinance then. All right, I believe that concludes this item. I want to thank everybody for their discussion and input throughout the process, as well as members of the public who've reached out to various councilmembers, and were here speaking this evening as well. The only thing I did want to add, just in terms of the environment, I hope it is true that the direction of the light and the way things are done with these dynamic displays will improve the environmental part of it, and hopefully we'll get some more data to tell us whether we're right or wrong about that. With that, that brings us then to item 7C, which is to consider, to review and affirm components of the strategic plan, and our assistant city administrator, Rebecca Olson, would be bringing this item before us for our consideration this evening. And actually, just before we start this, I know it is just before our eight o'clock normal break time, do we want to do the five-minute break?
Yeah.
Seems that way, why don't we take about a five-minute break, and give staff a little time to get settled at the table?
Exactly.
We're back from a short recess to continue with our meeting here. And next on our agenda, as I started to say before our break, we are looking at reviewing and affirming components of the city's strategic plan. And once again, we have our Assistant City Administrator Rebecca Olson here to lead the discussion. Also, all of the staff participants, I think many, if not all, of the staff participants who were part of the process with the council through the last few months here are here as well. I'll turn it over to Ms. Olson to kick off the conversation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You are correct, I am leading this, but as we all know, this has been kind of a joint collaboration for the last several months. One of the things that I wanted to do, since this is really the first opportunity--
I think we're having trouble with the PA once again.
Yep.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Oh, there we go. There, I can hear it. So, one of the things I wanted to do, since we've all been on this journey together, but this is really the first time that our community is getting to hear an update, is I'm going to give a little bit of background on how we got here. So, as we all know, this work began back in 2023 with our Envision Roseville initiative. That was our community visioning initiative, and the intent was to really update the community aspirations. Those aspirations were shared through our community input, our engagement process, and we came back with some revision statements, and really, it was conversations and input that highlighted the priorities for our community that was the outcome of that process. Taking that, what we did is, that's our foundation for moving forward for our strategic plan. So, fast forward to the last couple of months, we, staff and council, have been meeting in collaboration to really start defining a strategic vision for our community. And, as I mentioned, that plan builds on the Envision Roseville initiative, so that when we're talking about our priorities and values, they're aligning with what residents value most. It's also going to create a roadmap for a lot of our decision-making. One thing I do want to highlight, as I get to the next slide, is the strategic planning, strategic plan is a process, and this first phase is really focusing on that vision, the mission, values, and all the direction, the strategic directions that are going to shape our subsequent work. There is another phase that we're coming up on that I'll touch on, that we haven't gotten to yet, that has more of the nitty-gritty stuff that people think of when you think of a strategic plan. That includes objectives, metrics, department work plans, those types of things. The last thing I'll say before I jump into what our process was, is that, as we all know, this was a really purposeful consensus-building process, starting with our engagement during Envision Roseville, all the way up through our conversations that we've had between staff and council. And what we achieved is what you're going to see here in the strategic plan, is an agreement on those shared values and priorities. So, first and foremost, we started with our values, really talking about what guides our decision-making and influences how we operate and interact. The five values that we identified were accountability, community, equity, safety, and integrity. And the one thing that was really important through this process was defining what those mean. These are going to be the foundation for our decision-making, and so having a common understanding of what the meaning is was really important. Those definitions are later on in your packet. I'm not going to read them, but it's something that I think is really important, that we all keep forefront with this process. The next step was really talking about what do we want to be? And this was informed through a lot of that community engagement through our Envision Roseville process. That's what our vision is. It's a statement of what do we want to be? Our vision is that Roseville is a vibrant, safe, and inclusive community. Next, we started talking about what do we do? Why do we exist? Why are we here? What are we doing? That's our mission statement, and that means that we're here to create a high quality of life for our community. The next thing is, well, how do we do that? These were our strategic directions, yes, directions, and these also align very closely with a lot of those community aspiration categories or groups that we saw in Envision Roseville. So, these are what we're focusing on to help create that high quality of life for our community. So, the next step in this process is really to talk about success indicators, and that's something that we're going to be asking you to really give us some feedback on for tonight. So, we'll get through what these success indicators are, really, what does success look like for each one of those categories? We started this process in our last strategic plan session. However, with time constraints, we weren't able to fully kind of get through all of it. So, what staff did was, we had a long conversation, we talked through all of these directions, and we came up with, using what we came up with as a group, we looked at that and did a little bit of wordsmithing. We really wanted to focus on making sure that they all aligned with our values and everything. This is an example of just what that success, what a success indicator could look like. And what, before we get to that, I just wanted to walk through what those next steps of the process look like, because sometimes it's easier to understand what we're trying to figure out success looks like when you know the rest of the process. So, after we know what we're trying to achieve, is we're going to get into the really nitty-gritty specifics. We're going to talk about objectives and goals, or how are we going to achieve what that success looks like? Again, this is just an example, but if we're taking the community and civic engagement, and success looks like having the public feel valued for its feedback, input, and influence on the city decision-making, one way to achieve that could be to strengthen resident involvement and influence on city decision-making through city commissions, so enhancing that onboarding process for them. Then we need to talk about how are we going to measure if we're making progress towards that success? Those are our metrics. So, the next step would be to, once we've got those objectives, is to figure out the metrics. So, we want to set some goals under those metrics. Develop new onboarding program with feedback achieving a 90% satisfaction rate. And, not last but least, but last, the department work plan really is, what are the specific tasks that we need to do so that we can measure and achieve our objectives? So, those are the department work plans, where we'll go through and identify gaps, create materials, et cetera, et cetera. All of those are going to come back, and again, we're going to have that same collaboration where we work with council, probably in a work session. Staff will come up with some ideas, and we'll have a work session and work through those last steps there. So, that's kind of the overall process. At the end, the goal is, once we have the success indicators, the objectives, the goals, the metrics, department work plans, we'll adopt the full strategic plan. So, tonight, the ask of you is to review the success indicators, and we want to adopt those success indicators, because we can't move forward in that developing objectives and goals until we know what success looks like. This is something that we are all familiar with, but it's something that I wanted to highlight in case anybody is super excited about strategic planning and is watching this evening. This is our strategy tree. So, in the upper left-hand corner is our vision. It's that sun, vibrant, safe, and inclusive community. And then the tree, it starts at the very bottom with, I believe it was the mayor that made this analogy, that community input is the soil that anchors and nourishes the city of Roseville in their purpose. Building from that, the roots of the tree, the foundation, are our values. And then that trunk is, you know, why we're doing it, it's what we're holding us together, is our mission. And then our strategic directions are the branches on the tree. And then you can think about the leaves as being the objectives and goals, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's, this is what we were working on, and in case the community sees this again, this is what this means. And then these are those values and definitions that we all agreed and came to consensus on. And for reference, the very, very difficult-to-read words at the top of each category is what the original statements were that we came up with as a group during our last planning session. Again, staff took that, and we came up with slightly altered success indicators. And then, in your packet, there was some feedback from council, so that's also included in your packet of what that could look like. So, tonight, we do have all of our department heads here, most, all of our department heads here, to answer any questions and to have a conversation, if necessary, about what those success indicators will look like.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for the presentation. I think that was really great laid out, kind of where we have been, where we're going here. As you know, during the process, we really sat around the table as a group and talked a lot, and wordsmithed when we needed to, and so this isn't quite the same setup, but I think I want to try to approach it in the same vein as much as possible. I would mention, we did spend a significant amount of time as a department head group working on the wording, based off what was done before. Doesn't mean it can't be changed or anything, but I think we want to make sure this is kind of a back-and-forth conversation, and I would trust my leaders here to speak up if they have a comment, as I will, and so hopefully we can have some back-and-forth. This is probably going to be a little bit of clunky, because when you wordsmith, this larger group may not be the best. I'm not sure what the best approach is, taking one by one, or having a general conversation about them all, and seeing where we maybe need to work on, if some things are fine from some perspectives and some arc. I think as a collective group, what we have in front of you is something that we all agreed that was workable, not that, not like I said, can't change it, but, so I think we are in agreement with the language in front of us there on the slide, but if there's other language, let's have that conversation, go back and forth, and sort out where we're going to end up.
And I think it may make sense, unless there's disagreement, to try to do them kind of one by one. I think we can always take what we learn from the ones we've done, or the ones we've finished, and go back and see if we want to update previous ones, but at least that gets us sort of taking steps, unless that doesn't make sense.
Makes sense.
But, plus it's manageable, bite-sized things to try to do. So, I think the first one is the community and civic engagement one. I don't know if we want to zero in on that, or--
That's not good. How about if I pull up a different one here? Because I do have a different format.
Should just throw it open for thoughts, comments, feedback? Don't be shy. Should we turn, maybe we have the cameras on, everybody's decided that they can't speak as freely as we did in those other sessions.
Yeah. It does change the dynamic.
Just pretend they're not there.
I know.
I don't like the word fun. I like fun, but it just seems, everything else seems so formal, and the word fun seems so hard to quantify, or hard to assess, or some people will never want to have fun, but maybe enjoy, or appreciate, or--
Thoughts about fun?
I think we talked about that--
Let's make it free-flowing here.
It's going to be hard without that.
I'll just--
I think we all paused a little bit with the word fun and are very open to looking at that differently, but what we wanted to clearly articulate is that engagement isn't just having a voice of issues, but it's actually participating in the community on a bigger level, in a way that builds community, makes you get to know your neighbors, makes you care about your neighbors. And so, whereas fun might not be the correct word, we didn't want it to, and all be framed as, we come to a council meeting when there's an issue we want to talk about, but more of interconnected and woven together, and we wanted to make sure that that is talked about. So, open to anything on that, that was the, how fun ended up in there, if memory serves.
I think fun came from that discussion as a group prior to the staff review, too. I remember fun being in there. I think, I like capturing that notion and not making it sort of all business, and I think, you know, we may just have to figure out what, what the specific language is that we use there. I know, in my thinking about this, I was, I thought, you know, Roseville's public across all demographics is very formal-sounding. I mean, demographics is very specific. And so, one of my thoughts was to think about it in terms of all community members, and not start to get into classifications of community members, but just everybody, all community members. And I, that applies to a couple of the other ones as well, just in my thinking about how we do this. And that way, we're not sort of talking in, in business speak of demographic groups and, and things like that. So, that was just a thought I had.
I like all community members, and I also like fun. I mean, I think, I think both of them, because you're right, I think if we want people involved in our city, it can't just be, you know, a grind. There's got to be some fun activities as well.
We're the ones that have to deal with the grind, right?
Exactly. So, yeah, I could get, both of those seem reasonable.
Other thoughts, staff, council?
I think the group, when we talked about last time, came up with the demographics, and I'm not sure I was part of this conversation directly, so I don't know if anybody wants to speak to the demographics. I think what we want to make sure is not lost with all community members that we're covering, everybody. Seems like it's pretty expansive, but, you know, the demographics kind of cut a lot of different ways. I understand your point about kind of professional speak.
So, my recollection, others can jump in here as well, but my recollection was, when we defined the different strategic directions, we made a conscious decision not to have a specific strategic direction be just equity, because we wanted equity to be intertwined and woven throughout all of them. And so, we wanted to make sure that we weren't losing sight of that, and bringing forward that we're really focused on all demographics. So, that was, that was the impetus behind why we called out certain things in various ways.
I think that's a good point. That's the way I read it, is being a little more inclusive, rather than just saying everyone, or we, we love everybody. It makes a point, and I think it makes you stop and think, the word demographics, as it's written. I'm okay with the word fun, I think it's a, it's a good feeling.
Fun is good?
I appreciate the demographics. I feel like it's more intentionally there, and speaks to the inclusion that we're really hoping to have and the welcome. So, I think the demographics being specifically called out is kind of causing you to pause for a moment and think.
Is there something we're missing by using the term demographics? That's the only question I guess I would have.
That's a good point.
I mean, demographics covers a lot of things--
Yes.
But I don't know the answer, or if we are missing something, I just wanted to ask the question. Other thoughts? In specific answer to that question, or just the broader discussion we've been having? Don't be shy.
Your chance.
Remember, the cameras are off.
Cameras are definitely always on here. I'm just saying, right? I think the intentionality--
Imagine the world where--
I think the intentionality that you all are talking about is exactly the spirit of why we wanted to go with all demographics, because we know that specifically for community and civic engagement, we know that we have high participation from parts of our community that know how to engage with us, that know how to get ahold of us, and we know that there's parts of our community that maybe don't have that same comfort level with us. So, the intentionality that you all talk about in using all demographics was intentional in community and civic engagement specifically, is my recollection of some of the conversation that we had as a group, and thinking about why that language mattered, because we talked about that as well, right? Like, in other places, we say something like "community members" in place of "all demographics", right? So, I think that that was the specific reasoning behind why we felt community and civic engagement, we wanted to call it the demographics, just because we know that we want participation from all of our community, to your point, but also, we know that not all of our community participates in the ways that we like to engage with them. So, I think that was kind of what I recollect from our conversations.
Seeing nodding. All right. And we haven't come up with a better term for fun yet? Doesn't seem like--
Seems like fun is still good.
And there is, there are ways to sort of rearrange the wording that can, that can make it work more smoothly or less awkwardly sounding. Less awkward than that sentence, as a matter of fact. But--
That you just said.
So, you know, I think, I think there, if there needs to be sort of that technical wordsmithing, maybe we have, we have really professional writers on staff that can help with some of this.
Well, one alternative would be, all while having, all while enjoying the various activities and learning opportunities provided by the city, if you don't like fun.
I hate it.
I prefer fun.
I don't have a problem with fun. These, I could see what people can do with, like, cuts of this video, you know? I love fun, I hate fun.
Next time you run for reelection.
Yeah. Ads are writing themselves.
Put me on a postcard.
So, while we're trying to build consensus, ultimately, the council is the one that needs to approve these. So, I think we're talking about two items, fun, I think we're in agreement with, right? Keeping that in. It was the across-all demographics, I think staff feels that's important to have, and there's a variety of opinions up here, so I think maybe we try to start that out, and maybe we're close to being done on this first one.
I'd say it's pretty close, if we're going to have fun.
I do like the all-community members. I think it's--
It's, the uses in one of the later ones, though, too, so it's not a loss of that word in general.
Well, I think that gets into the professional writing part of it, is sort of looking at parallel structure and consistency and some of those things, which we can only attempt to address perhaps as well as those, those folks could. But, I don't think it's a problem that we would use it in, I mean, we use a couple of expressions in a couple of these anyway, so I don't know that that's the end of the world. I think that the more important thing is that we're comfortable with the language. You know, I can understand that all-community members maybe is just a little too nonspecific, and so I'm willing to, to step back from that a little bit, you know, in the interest of making sure that we're saying what we really want to say, but obviously, we want to have some consensus here.
Well, I did a quick dive on the Google, and demographics being also referring to housing status and other things like that, so I think that it just, the intentionality that Antonio spoke of is really, I think, there's not many other words that you could say, but other than demographics, that could cut across so many swaths that we've talked about are, are maybe not equally represented in our activities, so.
We, are there objections to the use of the phrase demographics, or the expression about demographics?
It's my preferred one.
But do you seem okay with that?
I'm good.
Right? Seems that way.
So, did we end up changing anything in this first one?
I think--
Not necessarily.
Nothing's changed.
Okay, I just want to make sure--
Long way around the block, nothing's changed.
Well, it's important to have the conversation.
See how fun this is?
This is fun. You're right.
All right.
Check that out.
All right, I think we can go to number two.
Yeah, so, under the reliable and sustainable infrastructure, that one was a little bit, I think it was this one, that was the one that we took up just a notch. I don't remember off the top of my head what the exact wording was that we came up with during our, our group. However, we thought that was more of maybe an objective or a goal, and then this one was just maybe a level above it. So, this was, the Roseville's assets and infrastructure are effectively, efficiently, and sustainably planned, managed, and funded, was the concept, the success that staff came up with.
Just for reference, the previous one that we worked as a group said, adequate capital improvement project funding leads to minimum service disruption.
You know what? I like, I like the way you said it. I'm good with it. Thumbs up.
Thumbs down. So, my only problem is, this is, this is very technical, you know, professional speak, and why are we effectively, efficiently, and sustainably planning and managing and funding them? I think the original language, talking about the lack of service disruptions or whatever, I think actually gets to the why a little better, which is, which is why I had suggested that the language be more like along those lines, something to the effect of, Roseville's assets and infrastructure serve the changing needs of the community while experiencing minimal failures or outages due to age or lack of upkeep.
I get that point.
And when you do that, you effectively, efficiently, and sustainably plan, manage, and fund them to get that out. and fund them to get that outcome. I don't know.
I see, I understand your point, it'd be nice if that wording could somehow be more positive.
Yeah, that's where I am.
It's like, kind of at the wrong end, I agree with you, the sentiment, but I think...
I thought you liked fun.
I just not fun.
For me, that's fun, no.
I think, yeah, I think the minimal failures and outages, it kind of draws, like, oh, our outages and failures are prob, you know, so I think the way that it's...
Maximum uptime.
Well, I mean...
And usability.
But in 10 years, that terminology could be long gone. So effectively, efficiently, and sustainably planned, managed, and funded, I would put a few more commas in there, but, see, I'm not the mayor, I didn't redo that.
Oh, I'm with you on the commas.
Okay. But I think the positivity side of effective, efficient, sustainable, and then managed and funded, like, there's a forethought, and it's intentional, and it's, you know, it's proactive rather than reactive. I think that the negative comes off as reactive. I had the same thoughts. Yep, I like this one.
Sorry, Mayor, I have the same thoughts.
That's all right, this is why we do this as a group.
And Matt, you were thumbs up, right?
I was thumbs up.
All right.
So there we go.
There you go.
That was quick, so no changes.
No changes.
Unless you all have some other thoughts after we've rambled.
The conversation you had, I thought the one that we had, was for Adam, so.
Hey.
All right, moving on, so responsive services and safety. We have community members with a variety of needs, will feel confident that city services are responsive to ongoing needs, and will keep everyone safe and secure and positively impact their quality of life. Just one piece on this one is the concept of a variety of needs was something that we took, I think both of our chiefs thought that was a good addition to it, just because of the diverse populations that they serve, they have a large variety of needs. So in addition, I, there was something else I was going to say on this one, I do think this one probably does need some, some commas in here, so.
No fun.
Despite all my red ink before, my only comment now, since I'm 0 for 2, is, which I'm okay with, believe me, is that I think this is the only one that had the future tense of will in it, and that, and so I would, if we stick with the rest of it or make changes to the rest of it, I definitely would suggest that our, our indicator is that community members feel confident.
I think it makes...
I don't know how we can predict when they will feel confident.
Right, I think that, that does take it out of, like, the, the more action, it's like, kind of more ethereal than, it's like, well, they will, so, yeah.
Success is when they do feel confident.
Yeah. So something that's more, everything else is really active verb, and so I think value, serve, you know, and so feel confidence, is that enough of an action verb, like, I don't know.
I think we would tend to agree, taking the will out makes more sense.
It's gone.
Sorry, dodging. Oh, hey, it is gone.
Yeah. Okay? Mm-hmm, that's much better.
Yeah, I think that might be enough.
Except for comma quantity. Comma quota.
He gets paid by the quote.
And once again, I just, I, you know, we, we are, none of us, you know, professional writers, and if there's somebody who can advise us on the tweaks that get the same language in the right order, cool.
I wouldn't, I would take the and out if you're going to put one after secure, safe, comma.
Wait, you're right, you got the first one in the right spot.
So now we get into the debate about the Oxford comma?
This one?
Nope, nope.
No, no, no.
Right there.
There you go. Perfect, I mean, perfect enough for us.
Good enough for government work.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, read out, moving along.
So the next one we have is parks and natural environment. Our parks and natural resources are preserved, maintained, and enhanced to ensure a broad cross-section of community members actively use and participate in our parks, activities, and facilities now and into the future. Whew, that is a long sentence.
Everything else has been Roseville or community members, so our implies a weird ownership, so would we just, could we just say, like, Roseville Parks and Natural Resources?
Just strike arts together, or just parks and natural resources?
Sure, I just feel like our somehow implies an ownership that isn't in the other ones.
And I wasn't sure if we already are talking about preserving, maintaining, and enhancing, if now and into the future needed to be there, just, is that extra words or not?
Yeah, I thought it was extra words.
I mean, I get, I get the sense about it and the intent, but...
The only reason I would speak to it is because this one has the natural environment under it, and I think that is such an integral measure of success related to the natural environment, so although I do agree with you that it can relate to, it might be duplication of the infrastructure one, I think as you look at the balance between all of our needs and the natural environment, making sure that we're leaving the community better than we found it, needs to be reflected in some way, that was the thought process.
We're preserving, maintaining, and enhancing it.
You could just take the whole, the end part off and write "for fun".
I understand what Matt is saying there, it's for future generations, but the way, maybe as I look at it now, that's saying that we're going to commit into the future to do all those things as well, which maybe we are.
We don't know.
Versus having the results impact us in the future.
I think the idea, if I'm understanding correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that people actively use and participate in the parks and activities now and into the future.
Correct, and there's that natural environment incorporated there as well, that is fully addressed, because it's one of the combination.
How about we take it and we turn it around? Community members actively use and participate in our parks that are preserved, maintained, and enhanced, something like that, where you, you make it more active, or the community members, because right now it's kind of passive, parks are preserved, and we have, the other ones have been Roseville, sorry?
Also not a hill for me necessarily to die on if it comes out, because I do understand the redundancy piece, I think it's...
You could say, potentially, a broad cross-section of community members, continue to actively use and participate, et cetera, et cetera, that might get to the now and into the future.
Continue?
I don't know.
I think we should just start it, from now into the future.
I agree with your point, but just looking at it and reading through it, but I can, I too can go either way on it.
Well, it is a sign of success, so once again, it is a little hard to say we've achieved success into the future, yeah. It might, it's kind of like the will in the other one.
Good point.
So we're taking that out?
Is the group okay with taking it out?
Okay.
Matt, are you okay?
It doesn't matter what the group thinks, it's Matt okay. Okay.
All right. All right, so then, economic vitality. Roseville has a diverse and stable business community, offers a wide range of housing types at all income levels, and includes multimodal transportation options.
The previous language was, Roseville has a diverse and stable business community, offers a wide range of viable housing options at all levels, and includes multimodal transportation options. So slight change or added income levels, is that the change?
Housing types and income levels.
What was the first part of the original?
Has a diverse and stable business community.
So it's the same.
Okay, okay.
Offers a wide range of viable housing options at all levels.
You know, I like this better, the viable thing doesn't work for me.
Yeah, I don't like viable.
Do we need to clarify what we mean by diverse and stable, or are we cool with that? I was trying to think, because we talk about housing types that work at different income levels, I was wondering, I was toying with the idea of talking about our business community, you know, offers a variety of, of jobs and opportunities, you know, I don't know, it was, it was hard to come up with language that would, that sort of specified more what diverse meant.
Right, yeah.
But, you know, we could just go with diverse and let people interpret it, too, I suppose.
And Mayor, I think that was maybe part of our conversation, is we thought diverse encompassed a lot of those different things, and we struggled with that same concept. I think that's where we were, but I could be wrong, but we kept adding and adding until it was too long, and then we said, let's just go back to diverse.
Fair enough.
I can see how that would happen easily, with trying to...
So my only other technical thing on this one is probably housing types don't have income levels, so maybe it has to be housing types for people at all income levels, or something like that?
I do like the addition of people in that context. I'll give you that one, Mayor.
I'll take any win I can get.
Yeah, this is trying to win points.
Only if everybody else agrees. It's not just Janice and me.
Would includes be something more active, like advocates for, or something, because includes seems so passive, I don't know, just seems like...
For multimodal?
Yeah.
Well, I think the advocating for is, is the work plan, right?
Yeah.
The goal is to include those transportation options.
Correct.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
I think it's the missing comma that's doing it.
I know, it's staring at me.
You might want to switch, you could consider switching the word out for provide, and provides multimodal transportation options.
I, I think includes is better, because that's insuring that the city is the only one providing, and I think we have multiple areas of others, we could, you know, help try to bring in others.
So then we do have to put the comma after all income levels, I just can't, can't go without some.
Killing them.
Because it is three, it's three different things that modify Roseville, yeah.
We could do a semi, semi-colon. I know.
Are we qualified?
I don't think so.
Take some special...
Want to have fun, but not that crazy.
That'd be, that'd be like being ALS versus BLS, right?
Okay.
All right, so we're agree with that wording that's in front of us there?
And so lastly, we have city operations. So this one says, "Roseville's workforce and public officials are capable, nimble, and forward-thinking in achieving its strategic priorities to ensure long-term stability of the city."
And we had previously, fairly long, "The city of Roseville has the right people in the right seat to achieve strategic priorities, and workforce is nimble, efficient, and forward-thinking." Second sentence, "The city has adequate reserves to maintain the stability through disruption."
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is a great improvement.
Yes, it is. Workforce, though, is that Roseville's city workforce?
City workforce.
And so maybe we need to say that, or?
You could say, the city's workforce is better.
Okay, Thunder City operation.
Yeah, cities, yeah. But that's a good point, because people could think of the community's workforce if they just say Roseville's.
Oh, no.
I wouldn't believe we'd let that just city.
Yeah.
City of Roseville workforce?
Yeah, or city of Roseville workforce, yeah. Because the, not implying that it's everybody who works in Roseville.
Right, well, then it's so oddly general and then specific for the city council. I can't type.
I'll watch you.
I like that, because it references the public officials, too.
That implies we're capable, nimble, and forward-thinking.
That's something to work for.
I did hear a suggestion of changing from achieving its strategic priorities to achieving our strategic priorities.
Well, it's ours, though, isn't it? I mean, we're on behalf of the community.
I mean, the city is an it, unfortunately, but as an organization.
So if it's referencing back to the city, it should be it, is that what you're saying, Mayor?
Or is it, or is it an us?
Do we even need it in there, in achieving strategic priorities to ensure long-term stability?
That is one way to deal with it.
Forward-thinking and achieving strategic priorities, achieving...
I feel like it doesn't need to be there.
But, I mean, strategic priorities can go a lot of different ways, we're trying to refer to...
The cities.
Cities.
Okay.
So maybe we just leave it as it's...
It's, I think, refers back to the cities, then, yeah.
Good with that?
All right. There.
The only thing I was wondering about this one was, do we need the, the, to ensure the long-term stability of the city, I mean, is that, is it necessary? Because, I mean, I think that's, that's defined elsewhere in our mission or something like that.
So you're thinking you put a period?
It may be, it might be just after priorities, period.
A comma, then a period.
Let's put them all in there.
And just semi-colon.
Colon, semi-colon.
I could understand that, yeah.
I think I have a kindred spirit in common, so we're gonna...
I don't like fun, though.
Are we good with moving that last part, then?
I'm in agreement, I'm, I think striking that would make sense.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Staff, you guys are good?
Yep, yep.
All right.
There you go.
Did we have any others?
That's it?
We're on such a roll here. Do you want to add more?
So with that, if this is, if this is the consensus of the group, what we'll do from a staff standpoint is we'll have our next staff session in February here with the consultant, we'll use these to start drafting objectives. I don't know how far we get, I don't know if we get into the metrics on this next session or not, but with all that, that will be coming back, because those are the important pieces that we want to make sure council is, you know, talking about the direction of how are we going to achieve these. So we'll give you, kind of similar to this, is we'll, we'll have some, something to react to, and then we'll have a work session with council to get to another consensus.
I think one of the things we're asked to do this evening, if I understand it right, is to affirm the vision, excuse me, the values, vision, mission, strategic directions, and now the success indicators, as we've developed them through this process, including this evening.
Correct.
Is there any objection to approving those? Hearing none, they are approved.
They're affirmed.
Affirmed, right. Affirmed, comma. All right, thank you again, everybody, for participating in this process up to this point and ongoing into the future, to borrow some language that we struck.
Thank you all for having fun.
Just a little bit behind here on schedule, but we'll keep, keep plugging away here. Item 7D, our last business item this evening, is to consider amending the city council and advisory commission rules of procedure to clarify public comment time limits. And this is a council member-initiated item that I had brought forward at our last meeting. And essentially, maybe Mr. Trezor, I don't know if you can put the language up on the screen, but basically, the idea was to clarify our rule about the three-minute time limit to clarify that it does not apply necessarily to presenters, or people who are appealing something to the council, or people who have a case before the council, or if the council's considering a, an action against them, like a license violation, or something like that, that those folks aren't restricted to the 10-minute time limit, and...
No.
All right, so we all get to watch the process.
The three-minute time.
The three-minute.
Three-minute time, what did I say?
It's a 10.
Oh, okay. The 10-minute would be the suggestion for those folks.
Yeah, yeah. Is there any number shorter than that would work?
Nine and a half?
Four.
As it's a suggestion, I mean, we could make it whatever we want.
I was just even thinking six, because it would double what we're at now, but, and as you always say, they can get a lot of information in it at times.
Sorry.
On the other hand, I think there is a fairness part to this, and it came out in the one you mentioned, Mayor, about that Conroy TV, because he had a whole presentation lined up, and he felt like he got cut short, and we don't want the public to constantly feel like we're cutting them off when they prepared something, and they need to be heard, you know?
Right, and that, and that was a mistake on my part in, in realizing that that was not a, a general public comment, or it was the, the person with the case.
But it wasn't clear in our stuff either, so I think that's good to bring it up.
What if hypothetically, thinking back to some of the, like, a... If hypothetically, thinking back to some of the Lake Owasso things, though, like when a large, when a group brings a whole bunch of, and then someone else brings a whole bunch of other things, so what, is there a limit? Do we have to know in advance they're going to be there? Just wondering if we have some parameters under which we're expecting them, because, you know, there were a lot of conflicting groups with bumblebees and other things that we had to hear about in that.
Yeah. So in that particular case, that was a land use case, and there was, it was related to the environmental review, and everybody was limited to the three minutes except the staff presenter, because, and potentially, I guess, the petitioner for the environmental review could have, under these, this adjustment, been allowed, you know, theoretically, the up to 10 minutes. We do already have rules as it relates to the, the chair, the presiding officer can extend the time if somebody is representing a group.
Yeah.
So there is some discussion for that. It's not the same as being the presenter, but if somebody is speaking on behalf of several neighbors, you know, they can, they can get a little more time. I think the challenge is oftentimes, is when that happens, all the neighbors that, or, no, several of the neighbors that were representatives still come up and get their three minutes, too.
When they want to repeat.
Right, so what I've, what I've tried to do is give people more than three minutes, but not necessarily 10, or, you know, something more reasonable.
I also think that situations like that, staff might be able to help identify some of those folks, probably some that we're working with more frequently, so we can chat with the mayor saying so-and-so seems to be the kind of lead spokesperson, so we maybe figure it out as we go along, even if it's not an official petition, but we know they're representing a large group, that give a little bit more leeway, and then once again, it's at the discretion of the chair to do that.
Well, and that, the Lake Owasso case is, is kind of unique, too, because, so the thing that was requested by the neighbors was a petition to the city to do the additional environmental review.
Yes.
So I guess that would have been the case, where the petitioners would have had the 10 minutes. I think then that came back to us to accept the environmental review, and I'm not sure at that point that the petitioners would have been justified to have a, a more time than the three minutes, because then at that point, they're commenting on what has come back as the environmental review.
Is that clear enough in here?
Well, I think that's already part of our rules.
Okay.
You know, this is specific to, I think, people bringing cases. But anyway, I think our attorney had some thoughts on it.
Mayor, I think the language is fine as written, but I just want the council to understand that there is, there is legally a difference between some kind, different kinds of cases that come before you, particularly when you're sitting in your quasi-judicial capacity. In that case, when someone has a due process right, I am going to strongly encourage you to be very lenient with the time.
Right.
To allow those people to fully make their case to you, which, like I said, this language is fine, but as this discussion's going on, I just want you to keep the difference between the petition that you received, where there aren't really due process rights at stake, and a land use matter, for example.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And that's why the language is written with the encouragement of the 10 minutes, but not the same kind of strict requirement, just for that reason.
Thank you.
So we have the request to add this language to our rules. We could potentially amend it, or suggest changes. Thoughts from the council? I know there's probably some missing commas.
Matt, if you wrote it.
It's gotta be perfect.
I'm just curious, I'm questioning the, on line number nine, the speaking, public speaking time limits above do not apply to pre-arranged presenters. So they, you are specifically aware that so-and-so is coming as an, as a representative of a large group of people. What is the group number? Is it me and my next-door neighbor? Is it, I'm just wanting to make sure we don't have a series of 10-minute things all about the same topic.
So my thought behind that is, I was thinking about, so say, when the legal wing voters comes to present a study that they've done about a city issue, that group is the pre-arranged presenter. Anybody who wants to comment about their study, those are the people subject to the three-minute time limit. I think if, if, like Ms. Howie this evening had the, had the PowerPoint, that's a pre-arranged presentation, except it's under the comma, it's under the public comment category, as opposed to somebody coming to the council as an agenda item to make a presentation to the council. That's the difference there, I think. Does that help add clarity to that?
Sure. So in any situation like that, I mean, because sometimes, do the Roseville comms or other things, too, so expecting that anyone in that type of capacity would be at it 10 minutes or less?
As a suggestion, as an encouragement. Certainly, if somebody is presenting something to the council that has a lot of content in it, like Stantec, or like who, the, the Stantec that did the housing study, and that wasn't the finished study, that was sort of a mid-process presentation, but anyway, getting off topic, you know, they certainly had a lot to present, so there was no way they could have done that in 10 minutes. And so I think that understanding is part of this. But it's an encouragement, just to put sort of a, a baseline out there for people, just to work with.
This is for people, members of the public?
Generally speaking, yeah.
I'm just wondering if we, if it's a just a recommendation, if it's needed, or if it's just a known.
Well, I think it also helps with our commissions as well. So having it here, I think will assist the commissions when they have these kind of scenarios and situations where, you know, maybe we're more comfortable with it, because it happens more frequently to us, but say, you know, variety of commissions, they may not really have the public coming, and when it does, at least there's this to refer to.
Well, and I suppose one of the things is, we could implement this, and, you know, if, if we have a terrible, you know, if we have a six months here where we're really falling behind in our work, because we've got so many people lined up, we can always change this after a period of time.
Well, and certainly, I think, generally speaking, the people who are allowed more than three minutes, there should only be one, or potentially two, per agenda item that might fall into that category. Mostly one, I would say. This is not, this is not somebody who gets to go to 10 minutes as part of the general public comment on an agenda item.
Well, it's kind of like taking 10 people, and instead of giving them all three minutes, we give one person 10 minutes, so actually you could save time.
Potentially, but I think, I, I don't know that, that that situation would be, I, that situation, they might only get less than 10 minutes, you know, because that's part of that discretion rule.
That's what I'm saying, is that instead of, because otherwise, you'd have to have everyone who signed that petition come up and talk, versus if you let their one head person talk for 10 minutes.
Right.
That's probably better than having them all talk for three.
Right.
So I think this might be a better way for people in, in those groups to be able to organize themselves, too.
But it doesn't preclude them from each individual having a frame.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, yeah. And I think keeping the 10 minutes in there as a benchmark never hurts, because then if there are people that might have tended to be too long.
True.
They have, they have sort of a guideline to try to work within, and it's entirely possible that, that the presentate, presentation on the petition might have been done in 10 minutes if, if not for the interruption from the mayor.
Oh, well, so.
So.
Is there a motion related to this rule?
I would move to adopt this.
I'll second it.
Yep.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Groff, to adopt this change to the rules. Discussion on the motion, it's the maker of the motion, Councilmember Schroeder, it's the seconder, Councilmember Groff. Other discussion, right hearing none. All those in favor of adopting this change to the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. See, that change is made. Thank you for your indulgence on that. That brings us then to consideration of city council minutes. We've got one set of minutes, the minutes from the January 6th council meeting, with changes and corrections as presented to the council, or by the council up to this point. Are there any other changes or corrections or a motion to approve as presented?
So moved as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Bauer, excuse me, to approve those minutes as presented. Discussion on the motion. My only comment, and other council members may have noticed this in the review, it's just an observation that it, it seems like our minutes have lately had more sort of like construction and grammatical kind of issues with them, so I don't know if they've had some turnover of personnel or whatever, but I noted, like, in this case, there were some minutes that had, or there were sentences that had capitalized letters in the middle of the sentence, and, and sort of run-ons, and things like that. So anyway, just a general commentary that we may want to tighten some of that up. Otherwise, if there's no other discussion on the motion, we've got the motion before us to approve those minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. And now that brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Tregeon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item 10A approves payments in the amount of $3,014,810.94. Agenda item 10B approves a temporary gambling permit for Whitetails Unlimited Twin Cities Deer Camp for a raffle to be held on March 22nd, 2025. Item 10C approves a renewal of a consumption and display permit for the Knights of Columbus Hall at 2233 North Hamlet Avenue. Item 10D approves the purchase of new police radios to meet the new FBI encryption requirements. This request was included in the 2025 CIP. Item 10E approves the quarterly grant report. So far in 2025, the city has received $397,000 in grant funds. Item 10F adopts a resolution to approve the, approve the conditional use request to allow Walmart to construct a 2,500-square-foot addition to their building to accommodate online pickups. The request was considered by the planning commission on December 4th, 2024, and it was passed unanimously. Agenda item 10G approves entering into an agreement with Daysmart Recreation for Recreation Management Software, and to begin the implementation of the new web-based software. Item 10H approves a renewal of the short-term rental license for 770 annual drive. Agenda item I approves a new short-term rental license for the property located at 329 South Owasso Boulevard. Then item J authorizes entering into a contract with the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension to conduct background checks for the Roseville Fire Department. And that is the consent.
Thank you, Mr. Tregeon. Is there a motion on the consent items?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Groff, to approve the consent items as presented. Any discussion on that motion?
I just wanted to mention, I was excited to see, read about this Recreation Management Software.
Mm-hmm.
Not only was it a substantial savings, but every person who rated it, either rated it first or second out of their choices. So I'm just excited to see why everyone is so excited about it, and how it can serve our city better.
Yeah.
And it's unusual to have the highest rated also be one of the less expensive, so.
Yeah.
I will note in that, there's, we'll end up using our own credit card processor, I believe, in the doc, the packet, it was going to be a 3% charge. That's typically an intro, given the volume that we have. We will, should be able to negotiate that down, so whoever we decide, I would encourage you, as we reach certain 100,000, to work with them, because I've never paid that much, that much for credit card processing at the volumes that we have. It should be much lower.
We'll follow up on that, yeah.
All right. With that, we've got the motion before us to approve those items. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. That brings us then to future agenda review. Mr. Tregeon?
Yes. We have a little bit of a break here. Our next meeting's February 10th. We have a couple items on there. We have the minor plat on 517 Rose Lawn, that's coming straight to the council. We want to have a discussion around, around Lesmo May, and we anticipate we'll have the draft RFP for Architect for the reuse of the maintenance facility, something we talked about in our last work session. We are going to look to put as much scope as we think we heard from you folks here, but we want to really have a conversation, make sure we're covering exactly what it was. So there'll be a building block that we can add more to it. Ideally, just to keep things moving along, we'd love to be able to come to an agreement, then have permission to issue it, but certainly if we need to come back and spend more time on it, we can. I just, as I look at the calendar, we're getting further and further out, so just want to keep us on task as much as possible. The 19th, and potentially the 20th, we have commission applicant interviews here in this room. I meant to get, I did not get, I do not know how many applicants we have at this point, but I know we have some that have come in already, so we'll see if we go on two nights. I know we have quite a few openings as well, so we'll want to make sure we have two nights available, just in case. On the 24th of February, we have Proclamation for Women's History Month. We want to have volunteer program update, just kind of checking in with the council and the work we've been doing the last few years, and also kind of receive an update on the Equity Inclusion Commission update. We've asked the members to be here, too, so there's a chance for some dialogue back and forth between the council and the commission, as they are pretty brand-new. And then on the 3rd, all we really have at this point, I'm sure we're going to fill in with more meatier topics, but we'll receive a presentation from the Twin Cities North Chamber of Commerce, and I'll make sure he's 10 minutes or less.
Oh, wow.
And that's important.
And then we have future meetings that we don't have much on the agenda yet.
Great. Questions on the future agenda as presented, or council member-initiated items for future meetings, or council member announcements or communications? Doesn't appear to be any. The only other item left on our agenda is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Groff to adjourn. No discussion on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously, and we're adjourned at 9:00 PM. Thank you, everyone.